Uh, mic test two, mic two test. Mic six test. Mic twelve test. Are we only doing one mic for the speak, the chair now? Okay. Staff mic test.
Let's... Clerk test, clerk test. Do you want to do that one?
Podium test.
Two test, two test. Two test, two test.
............... Table service dining. ...
April Service Dining.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, I've got ethics. Okay, it is Tuesday, February 2nd, at 10:51, and we are reconvening the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, meeting on our public agenda items. Could we get a roll call, please?
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo, Phillips, Lopez, and Adams appearing via video conference, and Chair Supervisor Root Askew appearing in person.
And today, we are welcomed by Maria Carmen Para, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Could we bring Maria on?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
You're here. Okay, wonderful. We will go ahead and do the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Maria, thank you so much for joining us today and for all of the work that you're doing for families in our community. We really value and appreciate that. And we did invite Maria to join us today. We will be hearing from the Children's Council a little bit later with some of the updates about work that's being done.
Thank you so much.
Okay, could we get, uh, thank you. Could we get a announcement of the Spanish interpreter services by Jocelyn Martinez?
Jocelyn Martinez interpreta español. Se les avisa que hay interpretación en vivo vía Zoom. Si selecciona el mundo al fondo de su pantalla y selecciona el lenguaje español, puede accesar eso. En estos momentos no está disponible si llama a Zoom. Gracias.
I know, but there's two pages missing.
Thank you. And we do have Spanish interpretation available for anyone watching on Zoom by selecting the globe icon at the bottom of your screen from a desktop or your smartphone. And at this time, we're still working on getting services, translation for available for people who call into the meeting via phone. For anyone who's watching on one of our live streaming services, if you'd like to participate in the meeting, you may join us on the Zoom webinar. The webinar ID is 224397747. Are there any additions and corrections for the public agenda today?
There are no additions and corrections.
Lovely. We will move right along to the consent calendar. We have consent calendar items 19 through 25. Do the Board of Supervisors want to pull any items for discussion, questions, or comments? Let me get you up there. I see Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to pull number 25 just for comment. I think there were some people that contacted our office that wanted to make a comment on it. And after that, I have some thoughts or comments that I'd like to add on, based on what we heard at the Capitol Improvement Committee, so.
Okay, so that's 25. Supervisor Alejo?
Me too. Item 25, same item. Thank you.
Okay, and supervisor Adams? Supervisor Adams?
I would like to just make a comment on item number 23.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and do that now?
Sure, yes. This item's on consent, but it has such a great comprehensive overview of the state budget that I feel it would really be very helpful to have an opportunity to review how the state's budget is going to impact the county and this year's budget process. So my suggestion, I know we, of course, don't have time for that today, but I would just like to recommend that any member of the public who is interested in really diving in and seeing what the state of the state is, would do well to really take a look at item number 23 and digest it a bit. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I was going to ask to pull 23 for comment, which I'll make very briefly. You know, this does impact, we're continuing to see child support services losing positions. And I do have concerns about how that is a state-manded program, state-mandated program that is significantly underfunded already and continues to lose funding that ultimately hurts children and families in our community, not just while they lose that service, but for the rest of their life. So just calling attention to that. I would like to pull item 25 for a separate vote. So if we could have, I'd be willing to entertain a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I know I'm late, but I was hoping just to make a brief comment on 24 as well.
Of course, please go ahead.
I just, you know, this is the ratification of the proclamation of a local emergency. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of those folks who worked through these storms to keep us so well positioned and prepared to respond. I know we didn't lose a single life with all of the damage we saw around the county, and that is a feat. And I want to thank all of our Public Works professionals who have been working so hard to reopen roads and make sure that our traffic is moving through Monterey County again. Monterey County Regional Fire, Cal Fire, their gavel and crew, Monterey County Public Works, Granite Construction, and the Don Chapin Company all played huge roles in the middle of the eye of that storm. I was out there with a lot of them and watching them work professionally and prioritizing our communities was critical and important. And so I just wanted to make sure that we gave them a little due recognition this morning as part of this item 24, moving forward, the opportunities to help our community recover with the Governor's proclamation as well as a declaration. And now we need to all push together to get the funding needed to fix roads like Nostalmeno Ferguson at the federal level. And so I just wanted to make sure I spoke to that item this morning as it was a big deal last week, and now we have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. And I think we all agree with those comments of support. Before I do a motion, we do have one public comment. If we could give Lisa Brenton time on the clock for her comment.
So I, I'm sorry, I'm caught a little bit off guard. I was wanting to comment on item 25. Is this the opportunity to do so?
This would be a perfect opportunity. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. So my name is Lisa Brenton. I'm Planning Manager with the City of Salinas Community Development Department. And both Andy Myrick, Economic Development Manager, and I spoke at the Capitol Improvement and Budget Committees, expressing the city's commitment to work collaboratively with the county on a long-term, permanent parking structure at the site that has currently been identified for moving forward with temporary parking. And so, you know, comments, you know, the format, the framework for moving forward is in our Downtown Vibrancy Plan as well as the Downtown Government Center MOU. And the timing is right as we are working collaboratively with county staff to update that MOU. And this is the perfect opportunity to really outline both the city and county's commitment to work together towards that long-term structure. At the committee level, we heard that there's a desire for the city to come forward with a plan to show how this is feasible, and we will continue to work with county staff to do that. As well as, we just encourage, with the approval of this item, that direction is given to county staff to look at opportunities to leverage any current work that is done on a temporary parking solution to then benefit the long-term parking structure in terms of technical or environmental analysis completed. So thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with county staff to bring this project to fruition.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Lisa. Any other public comments? Seeing none. I'll bring this back to the board. As I said, I would like to have a discussion about item 25 in a separate vote. Is anyone willing to entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Lopez.
Okay, I think I heard, I'll call that a motion from Lopez and a second from Phillips, if I heard correctly.
That's right.
Okay, fabulous. Any other discussion? We'll call for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Just for covering, this is everything except 25?
Correct.
Okay, aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. The motion carries. Okay, so for item number 25, I think I had a couple different folks who asked for that to be pulled. That was Phillips and Alejo. Supervisor Phillips, would you like to make your comments first?
Yeah, this came before the Capitol Improvement Committee, and I know we voted to move forward on the short-term parking, with the AD parking. But when some people from the city of Salinas and the business community came before us and indicated a real desire to look towards our EIR, to look at doing something on the long-term basis versus just a short-term basis. I think it made sense, and the city agreed or indicated that they would be interested in paying at least a portion of that towards the EIR for the long-term garage. And you know, just as a little historical thing, I've been here 50 years. For at least 45 years of that, we've been talking about a parking garage somewhere on the county campus there. In '79 or '80, I know we talked about a parking facility there, and a local attorney, Tom Worthington, had have a big thing to save the lawn. It was very effective, and it went away. Then we were talking about a joint parking garage. And I gotta say, over the years, the county and the city hasn't worked very well on these joint projects. I think that is changing. But I know we were talking about a joint parking garage somewhere in the eighties, where in the middle of downtown, that would be convenient to the downtown merchants, but also the county complex. And next thing we knew, the city built the parking garage there by the Steinbeck Center, and everything went away. Later, that, we were proposing a garage across Alisal there, and then some of the residents objected, and the city didn't support it. And I know, when I were looking at trying to build a courthouse years ago, which obviously wasn't effective, but every developer I saw came here and said, "Well, the first thing you ought to do before you do anything is build a parking structure for it." So I think it may be feasible, and I think it's at least worth putting a little more money into the environmental thing. I understand Supervisor Alejo's concern because so many things get stretched out, and we get nowhere. But the idea that maybe we can avoid spending the $2 million on this and put it towards the long-range solution, I think, is worth sharing with the city, the county, and the courts, all working together on it. And I gotta say, I see the city and the county working together better than I've seen ever in my time that I've been here. We have the Sheriff's Center, we have the Warming Shelter, we got animal control working together. And as you can see, like, the road that we built going to Johnson Canyon, going to Johnson Canyon, when you have a number of entities down there, we had Gonzalez, the Waste Management, or Salinas Solid Waste, we had Gonzalez, and we had the county all working together on it. So I think it can be done. It's worth at least spending the money to explore that. And you know, they've done some, in some areas, they've done some design builds, and I know they built a number of places that I know about, but just looking recently, not that recently, but the Dublin courthouse up in Alameda County was a joint agreement and working together with the city, the county, and the courts all working together on that. And so I think it is feasible. I mean, in that one, looking at how they did it, they did it with the county getting some benefit for the donating of the land, and then they worked to that. But I'm just saying, I think it may be worth our while to explore the long-range project more than just solely on the short range. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Alejo, did you also ask to pull this?
Yes, ma'am. I want to speak of this. You know, I want to be clear. I've not, I've never, just for the record, I've never opposed the concept of a garage. The problem is, though, the city and some of the downtown merchants asked for it over and over, but no one, and now the District Attorney, poor modular offices were removed in September of 2018. So that's almost two and a half years ago. And since then, the people who have been asking for garage, we've asked repeatedly. This has come before this board already twice. This is the third time. Among all the Capital Improvement Committees and the Budget Committees, I think we probably had 10 hearings on this already. And each of those times, we keep, and we've always said we had an open door, bring a financing plan so that we could consider that. So two and a half years later, there is zero financing plan, and Charles will affirm that the last time that the county and the city were looking at putting a garage on the West Alisal employee parking lot, it was Mayor Donahue who pulled that project because of neighbor opposition. We shouldn't assume that the neighbors on this side would not have concerns or potential legal challenges to that also. So let's not assume it's just going to all be, not that the same neighbor complaints are not going to arise on here. But nonetheless, I think the main issue is, if you want a garage, where is, because the county's not asking for a garage. It's the city and the downtown merchants that are asking for it because of some housing they want to bring in. But this is where the city, with potential developers, should be able to come to the county, saying, "County, if you put the property, if you put $2 million, this is how we're going to pay for a project that's likely $30 million and over." And so in two and a half years, we have not seen that. So we could keep saying this over and over and bringing it back, but we all know, the city doesn't have the money, the county doesn't have the money, and our Budget Committee on Wednesday, our Health Department has a $5 million deficit. They're going to come back next week. We'll be hearing from them in a week. Our RMA has a $2 million deficit, and that's just two departments. That's not including all the other departments that are impacted because of we needing to continue services and not getting additional federal cares dollars. So my frustration is that we keep asking for, how are they going to pay for $30 million? And that's just the construction. There's also an ongoing cost of operation in Maine. It's O&amp;M. And I brought this up last Wednesday, and I brought it up in these meetings previously, that the Monterey parking structure that is run by the city, every year has a $250,000 to $350,000 O&amp;M deficit. So it doesn't pay off. And secondly, even if you built housing, it doesn't mean that residents are going to go park their cars there during the evening hours. And I've raised this point, the city has a parking lot off of South Main and West Alisal where their permit center is. And if you go there, I think if Phil, any of my colleagues go there in the evening, and it's only a block away, a block and a half away from Main Street, and you see our local consumers and residents using that parking structure in the evening that's even closer, it's empty. Nobody's using it. So just saying that we're going to build it, and everybody's going to use that in the evening, I think it's not a clear argument, because if you look at the parking structure that's there now, that's closer, it's not being utilized at all during the evening hours. And so on the flip side, we do have a parking need for 80 additional spaces. It kind of fits the need that we have this time. The courts have no money. So to say, and we brought this up, I think, two years ago, we're saying, "Oh, the courts have money." They don't have money. They don't have any construction money for anything. They don't have it for courthouses, much less for parking lots. So let's take that argument off the table. But our courts do need additional spaces here for the judges. The 80 spaces could fulfill those additional needs. We do have, we have had employee accidents on West Alisal that the county, the last two cases, we had to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's real. That's a real fact. And nobody is stepping up to help us pay those costs. And now they removed a crosswalk on the most dangerous. That's where the accidents were. That crosswalk on Gavilan on West Alisal, it's no longer there. So the risk to our employees and the public crossing there, now that there's not even stop signs on that four-corner, it's even greater. So it even puts a greater need to have parking where it is safe on the backside of our parking campus. So I think for every reason, for liability reasons, for our employee, and our county and our court's current needs, and to not have a needed lot to go empty for many more years. And like I said, I think a realistic financing plan is not going to happen 10 years from now. And it would be a shame, and we've already done it for the last two and a half years, but it would be a shame to see another seven and a half years or another 10 years that the slot went unused because we couldn't just be decisive and move forward on action. We've already deliberated this, now three times among the full board. And now I hope that we don't delay it once again. I think today's action, I think the staff's recommendation is to move this forward in phases. This money, to be decided today, is just to do the planning. We could still make a motion today to allow the city to come back and give them a timeline, come to us within three months, and bring us a realistic plan that we continue. But let's not halt the work that we've already delayed for two and a half years. I think that's a responsible approach. That's a smart approach. And it still doesn't close the door for the city of Salinas to come and bring a realistic financing plan that will pencil out, so then we could decide on. And also knowing that the city and the county just do not have the budget, and will not have those budgets in the next few years either. So I just hope that we can move forward, at least on this planning phase for this project. But welcome an open door for the city to come to us within three months and bring a financing plan for us to really consider, instead of just having the same argument in cycles over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. I'll share my comments, and then we do have some public comments. You know, I'm just disappointed that we didn't have a chance to consider this project in the context of a finance plan for the larger parking structure. We've really, as a county, been limited with our staff capacity to work on the issue of paving the lot, much less working with the city to keep the process moving forward and discussion of a financing plan. So you know, my preference today would be to table this for two weeks so that we can sit down again with the city of Salinas. There's a brand-new city manager, there's a bunch of new electeds. There's a number of things I think that we could sit down and review so that we come back and move forward with some sort of consensus agreement, working in partnership with the city. And if we do want to have a plan to, you know, move forward in phases or begin, review the Downtown Vibrancy MOU, review the roles and responsibilities, so that the county can move forward with this project in the context of that broader vision and that broader set of goals. That would be my preference today in the ask of my colleagues.
But Wendy asked.
Having said, well, I'm sorry Supervisor, having said that, I would like to go to public comment, and then we can bring it back to the board for discussion.
Yeah, just a point of clarification that I want to make afterwards.
Okay, great. So for public comment, I have Andy Myrick. We'll allow you time on the clock. Thank you for joining us today. You may unmute your microphone and share your public comment.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. Yeah, my name's Andy Myrick. I am the Economic Development Manager with the City of Salinas. And I just wanted to try to clarify a little bit of what the city is asking. We're not at this point asking that there be any changes to this particular item. Our understanding is that this item is simply to allocate money to the Capital Improvement Budget that have already been spent during the current fiscal year. And so this item doesn't actually, from our understanding, have much bearing on whether or not we go forward with a permanent parking structure or we look at, you know, a temporary parking structure. What we're really looking for here is we want to be able to work with the county staff moving forward from this. So what that means is that, we've, you know, it's been mentioned, to bring forward a financing plan. That's, putting one of those together, and working with your staff to do that, is what we're asking to do. We would like to put together a financing plan, but we've gone about as far as we can without engaging in some conversations with the county about what the county mayor may not, you know, be willing to discuss with us. So for example, we could look at tax increment financing. But we don't know right now whether the county would be a willing partner on that kind of an issue. And so we'd like to discuss that issue with your staff, as well as a number of other items pertaining to this. Not only with the financing, but also with potential future management and operation of this. As Supervisor Alejo has correctly pointed out, there is an operating and maintenance budget. There are costs to design and build this structure. And so we're looking for a partnership to put a plan together, not just for us to bring you an idea, because we won't be able to put together a comprehensive one without input from your staff. And so I just wanted to clarify what we're asking for. It's not related to this item. It's what the next steps look like. So thank you, and if there are any questions, Lisa and I are both available here.
Excellent. Thank you so much for joining us and for your clarifying comments. I believe that was different than what we'd heard, or at least what I had heard previously. So Supervisor Alejo has additional comments.
Yeah, I mean, I like to make a motion on this as the city clarified. They're not opposed to what's before us, and what they're asking for is a convening and giving actually a motion and action so that our county staff can meet with them. I'm not against that at all. And I know, but I previously wanted to respond to your comments, Madam Chair, because there has been previous conversations and meetings about this. When Lou Baumann was here, he had regular meetings with City Manager Ray Corpus, and there was numerous meetings about this. And that was, it was always supposed to come back with a proposal, and it just, nothing ever happened on it. But there was meetings outside of these public ones between city and county staff about this issue. It's just been a while since it got picked up. Now that this came, you know, it's been, I think, over a year since it last came for the board again. So I would make a motion that we approve today's item, but also provide direction for our RMA staff to set up meetings, to work with the City of Salinas staff to explore and bring potential options for a financing plan for a permanent, larger parking structure at this property. And maybe we give them a timeline. I would say, come within 60 days. I hope that's enough time. That way, we give a timeline, and we know, I think, we need to get that full information. And I think for our board, if we're able to look at a plan and be able to determine, is this realistic for the county to take on a large capital project partnership with City of Salinas? If it is, let's really seriously look at that. And if it's not, then make that decision and then put the temporary plan in place. But I would say, let's make that 60 days to come back and put it on this agenda so that we could put some urgency for both county and city staff to bring a potential financing plan forward for us to look at all aspects of, including whether both jurisdictions could afford it. That'd be my motion.
I'm happy to second that.
Chair, point of clarification. I believe Supervisor Alejo said RMA staff, and there is no more RMA yet. So my recommendation would be that the CAO determine which staff is appropriate to meet with the City of Salinas to work on the plan.
Agreed to that.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, you're good. I'm good with that as well. Okay, wonderful. I like being aligned with you Supervisor Alejo on this. Any other board comment? I'm seeing no other board comment. I'm just, thank you for engaging in the discussion, and I think that, you know, we do have a lot of new folks who've come into play since this was previously discussed. And, you know, I just want to emphasize, I think, speaking on behalf of myself, in District Four where this project would be proposed to be built, and the entire Downtown Salinas Vibrancy Plan, I think that having the city and the county remain aligned and have a chance to look again at the vibrancy plan and ensure that we are all pursuing our own respective roles in regards to seeing that move forward, I think is important. So with that, we'll call a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. So that takes us out of consent. Moves us right along to ceremonial resolutions. We have, it looks like one ceremonial resolution. Is that all we have? We have one ceremonial resolution on the agenda today for recognizing John Ramirez for his 32 years of service with the Environmental Health Bureau in Monterey County Health Department. Is there any board comment or public comment on this item? Any board comment? We do have some public comment here in the audience, so I will invite Eric Peterson up to join us.
Good morning. My name is Eric Peterson, and I'd just like to thank Mr. Ramirez for his service. I interacted with him a number of times, and without fail, he was courteous and efficient and did a good job. And just the kind of person you want as a county employee, really. And he has earned his retirement. I hope he has a good time. Thank you.
Thank you so much Eric. And just on behalf of the board, I do wish John a healthy and joyful retirement. Thank you for your service. And we do have a beautiful resolution that we will make sure gets delivered to you at some point here in the future. Okay, we need a roll call from the clerk.
Was there a motion?
Well, I don't think there was a motion.
I think we were waiting on that.
We do need a motion. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Oh.
So I'll make the motion.
Entertain a motion. Who do we have?
Lopez will make some motions.
Adam seconds.
Okay, I've got a motion from Lopez and a second from Mary Adams. Thanks for keeping me honest. And a roll call from the clerk now. Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. All right. Now that we know that everyone's awake, we'll move on to appointments. We have appointments on items number four through 10. And we will do these as a group. Is there any board comment on appointments? Any public comment on appointments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, I think I heard Supervisor Adams for a motion, and Supervisor Phillips for a second. Okay, thank you. And we will request a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did ask, I think. Was there any public comment?
You asked.
Okay, perfect. All right. We'll do a roll call vote now. Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to take something out of order. I thought we were going to present something to John Ramirez, and that's why I was holding him off my comments, because as we usually do, I didn't look at your, the chair's agenda today, so I just assumed that we were going to present something afterwards. But if I could just briefly say a quick comment, John, knowing that
Absolutely, please.
if he's retiring, sometimes when they retire, I want somebody to leave without us, especially when they interact a lot with this board, to leave without at least us saying a thank you. And I personally just wanted to really thank him for his leadership. When it came to issues of clean drinking water and public health and safety, I think John was a real leader. We were the first county to approve a human right to water. And I know John's commitment was to making sure our families had access to that. As we know, that there were real issues of nitrate and arsenic contamination, among other things, throughout our county. So I just personally want to just really say thank you, John, for your many years of service. I wish you well in your next endeavors. But I think your work spoke for itself. I wish you well in your next endeavors, but I think your work spoke for itself, and I think it really helped improve the lives of thousands of residents throughout Monterey County, especially our poorest and our most disadvantaged. Thank you, sir, and congratulations, wishing you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. And I see Supervisor Lopez has his hand raised as well, so we will go, we'll, we'll just backtrack here. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment in thanking John for his dedicated service to all the residents of Monterey County. I know I was very fortunate over my decade of staff to work closely with John on solving some huge problems, and they were typically the ones that weren't headline worthy, but they meant a lot to the communities who wound up with clean water, safe septic, and lowered bills. And so, John, thank you for all your efforts on behalf of the residents of Monterey County who sometimes felt overlooked and unseen. You treated everybody equally, and that meant the world to them, meant the world to me. And I was really sad last December to get that call from you, letting me know that you were deciding to, to retire, but we wish you well in your retirement, and thank you for all the time you spent serving the people of Monterey County. Thank you, John.
Great, thank you Supervisor Lopez. And Supervisor Adams?
John, I, I, I wish you well. You have put together a great team, so I, although we're going to be missing you, you will, you, your legacy will live on by the excellent staff that you have trained and brought up over your years here. I, I wish you really well in your retirement, and I hope you enjoy every minute of it. Thanks again for your service.
Thank you Supervisor Adams.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I did, I concur on what everybody said. Thirty-two years, you're certainly not leaving as a temporary employee, so we worked together on a lot of projects, some we battled, some we agreed on. You were key in us getting what we needed to get the ranch opened back when we were struggling with that. So appreciate your years of service, and as Supervisor Adams said, you let us, left a, a good building ground for the people coming behind you. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, so having backtracked back to our resolutions, we'll now move right forward ahead to other board matters. Item number 11, which is board comments. We'll just go down our districts. I'll start with Supervisor Alejo for board comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Health Department, all our county staff, our doctors that participated in last Wednesday's Spanish COVID Town Hall. It was, I think it was run very well by Univision reporter, Gianna Frederick, and really covered a lot of key questions for the Spanish-speaking community. So I, I think we're one of the few counties that not only holds these virtual town halls in English, but a commitment to also reach our many Spanish speakers throughout our county. So I just wanted to want to thank our staff for, for doing that and partnering with our local TV stations to promote it and get the word out and the live stream. I think it was very beneficial during a very critical time. The other issue I wanted to raise up was this issue of the Paharo Valley School Board. Some people assume that's Watsonville, but that school district covers North Monterey County, and this was one of those issues I was in touch with Supervisor Phillips about. And it was, it was, I think, really disturbing to the community to see that a superintendent with an excellent record, who was really focusing on the needs of, of students and, and bringing back arts programs and music programs, cinema program with actor Edward James Olmos, all of a sudden, all of a sudden was, the community was blindsided with her immediate firing last Wednesday. But luckily, with the outcry, the outpouring of support and the roar of the community, after two long, seven-hour meetings on both Friday and a special meeting on Sunday, the superintendent was reinstated, the board president was removed, the vice president of the board was removed, and there was an issue of bringing in some outside attorney. The, the regional council was reinstated, but in all my years of local government, I've never seen that kind of an outpouring from the community. There was over 300 public comments, over 1,000 viewers on both meetings. So for, just looking at my hometown, it was, I was proud that our residents really stood up for their students, their schools, and their superintendent, especially during a pandemic where the focus should not be on, on personal and political agendas, but really putting the needs of our kids first, getting our teachers and school staff vaccinated and, and having a plan to reopen as soon as we could get a, a critical mass vaccinated in our community. So I, I'm just, I just wanted to applaud North Monterey County residents and the Paharo Valley residents for really being an example of a community that really stands up for its schools and its education leaders. Last, on a, on a other lighter note, the Super Bowl is this Sunday between the Kansas City Chiefs and the Tampa Bay Buccaneers at 3:30. I hope, I hope our residents will watch it and practice the safety protocols, not have large gatherings, as that is, you know, would, would endanger and, and get us back into the negative where we don't want to be in terms of this COVID pandemic crisis. So I just wanted to encourage our, our families and, and their friends to watch the game, but watch it separately, watch it safely. And just one last note, they also, this weekend, they also give out the Pro Football Hall of Fame. I was recently involved in trying to get 83-year-old Tom Flores, the first Latino quarterback, head coach, and president and general manager in the NFL of a team. He's, he won four Super Bowls, but at age 83, he still has not been inducted into the Hall of Fame. So those announcements will be made on Saturday. I hope that he is inducted, but I, I was involved in getting Central Valley Cities, which is where he is from, the cities of Fresno, Sanger, and Yaron to pass resolutions in support. The city of Los Angeles, I was involved in that resolution to support, I see one of his Super Bowl wins was for the Los Angeles Raiders. And just yesterday, the California State Legislature also took up a resolution that I drafted, also support. So I just wish them luck, but I, but I, we didn't take up a resolution here, but I did want to just express that, that this Latino icon in professional sports, and I hope this time will come this weekend to finally be inducted and receive these honors that are long overdue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. Supervisor Lo, sorry, Phillips, any public board comments?
Try to jump over me there for a minute.
Uh, you did.
Now, I, I concur in Supervisor Leao's assessment of, of Coach Flores. I was living in Oakland. We used to watch him play and then watch him coach. He was an amazing guy. In, in our area, when the storms came, we didn't get hit anywhere like it did in the southern part of our, our county. But even at that, to kind of reiterate a little bit what Chair, or Supervisor has previously said, we, we had some damage here. Trees go down, some other things, and it was amazing how quick Public Works and Fire Departments got to help us assist, even with everything they had going down south. So appreciate that. Our office has been busy trying to help people who are 75 or older getting signed up for the vaccine, and it's, it's worked pretty well. We've, we've been getting on the people, we've been able to get lined up with the vaccines. They, they say the process at all three hospitals have been excellent. I just got a email from retired Chief Probation Officer Parsons about how well her vaccine experience was at Nativat Ed Hospital. So the biggest thing we're hearing now is people 65 and over who have health considerations are calling wanting to know when we go, and so we'll notify them when, when we have slots available. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I would never skip over you Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Lopez, any board comments?
I guess I've got to up the, up the amount I offer next time to skip over you Supervisor Phillips. I want to see if it's still okay to, to go ahead and cheer against the Patriots this weekend? Is that still acceptable, even though they're not in the big game? I, I want to also echo the comments of Supervisor Phillips on the four hospitals in Monterey County getting great accolades in terms of their vaccine rollout. We're, we're hearing great things, and just want to encourage the community to continue to assist one another in getting signed up. We know most of our offices are helping folks get that done. And so just want to continue to encourage folks to help those in your community get signed up to get to a vaccine point. We know that it's critical at this point, as they are some of the most affected by this virus. I was remiss earlier in not giving a few more thank yous in terms of the storm, and I want to thank our C A O. I was calling him very late that night, standing in the middle of a ditch, asking for the okay to do some things, and he was responding. And so was Randy Ishi, the head of Public Works or the new department, which I always forget the acronym for, but I want to thank them for their professionalism, for helping to steer through a crisis like that in, in, in the middle of it. It really meant a lot to me, and it meant a lot to the communities that were getting some benefit from, from all of the assistance that was rolled out there. And I also wanted to give one more shout out to the Regional Fire District, Monterey County Regional Fire. I know item 22 today was giving, getting them a backhoe, and so I've got to give a shout out to County Council who helped us get that to them just ahead of the storm with a separate agreement, just to get that done. But we're, there was a lot of collaboration that went on ahead of this storm, and I just want to encourage us all to continue to collaborate afterwards. I know I've heard a lot of, from a lot of folks about Nacimiento Ferguson Road, and for me, obviously, that's the place I love to go to escape from the cell phone coverage. And so I just want to say that as we move forward here, let's, let's continue to lean on each other as we have a lot of work ahead of us to continue to recover from these storms. But again, I just wanted to make sure that those who put in the work that during those storms got the recognition, and with that, I will wrap my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll jump in with my comments. I just wanted to, again, thank our Health Department staff and the community that organized a COVID in the black community Zoom event last night. The presentation from our County Health Department Director, Elsa Jimenez, was just on point. It was excellent. She was clear and concise in her delivery, and I think it was really appreciated by the community. And also the commitment to continue ensuring, to ensure that we maintain a focus on equity in our overall response and in the delivery of testing and vaccines. That message was loud and clear. I'll be hosting my first Wednesday with Wendy Community Town Hall meeting tomorrow night. My first special guest will be Dr. Denise Guss with the County Office of Education. Will be reviewing the most recent guidance on reopening schools and the COVID data in Monterey County as it relates to the reopening of schools. I also wanted to briefly share a comment that I received from a community member who received their vaccine. This mother says that, she says, "I cannot express enough the gratitude I have felt since receiving the COVID-19 vaccine through the Monterey County Health Department. As a caregiver and mother to a child with special needs, Down Syndrome, it was incredible to be seen as important as our healthcare workers. It made me feel like my family is essential and worthy. The convenience and location and the helpfulness at the North County High Location was superb. Being able to stay in the comfort of my car with warm welcomes and competencies surrounding each phase was truly amazing. Thank you to all that have a role in the vaccination process throughout the county. Your hard work does not go unseen." We've been receiving many messages like this from community members, and I just wanted it to be on record and to thank everyone who's working so hard to get our vaccine clinics up and running. I'll move right along to Supervisor Adams. Any board comments?
Thank you, yes. I have two subjects. The first regarding the vaccines, I think things have really turned around and improved. People seem to be able to get appointments now when they had not been able to beforehand. As you know, my, my district skews a little bit older than many of the other districts, and it's been very difficult for people to be able to try to even figure out how to go online to get an appointment or use Facebook at all. But I'm happy to report that following the good example Supervisor Phillips' office provided, my team is going to, my team is now helping residents get appointments by helping them go through the process of applying for, of registering and making appointments. So please feel free to call our district office, because we'll be able to help you maneuver the system to get your appointment. As everybody knows, my district has, was really hit hard this past week by the rains. Many people had to leave their homes to be evacuated because of the storms. The Atmospheric River really caused a lot of damage to the area, most of it from the Burn Scar area. People who were down on, on River Road, the mudslides there have just been a disaster. I am so thankful to all of the emergency responders and Public Works crews for the work and the service that they did during the Atmospheric River. I saw many of you cleaning roads, and I also saw you wading through the flooded areas over by the lagoon, and I know you worked late hours to get this work done. In addition to the issues that we had over on River Road, we also had the flooding at the Carmel Lagoon, which is where I saw a number of the, of the workers over there. But the biggest issue, of course, is down in Big Sur. Our staff is working so hard to clean up these areas, and as everybody knows, Big Sur is such a resilient community, but they've been tested again. I'll tell you, I had the opportunity to go down and take a look at the, at the road slide, and it's just like a big giant hole in Highway One. It's going to be very difficult to fix, and at this point, I know that there's a lot of assessment going on within Caltrans to try to figure out what is the best way to fix this situation. Is it going to be a, a bridge? Is it going to be going over the road? It's just really, really serious. The other part of the road that concerns me, of the Highway One-Big Sur area, concerns me so much was the condition of the Nacimiento Ferguson Road, because that's one of the few ways, and is the only way in our county, to get from Highway One to, out of Big Sur over to Highway 101. And it's really been a mess. It's been just, it's totally impassable. The slip-out really impairs the ability for the people in Big Sur to get out, to get supplies. I want to read to you, though, a little quick message that I received from one of the local residents. This person and his wife had been hiking up Nacimiento, clearing brush, they had shovels, they were doing work just to try to help get a little bit cleared out. And he said, "We returned to the summit and started down the east side, clearing trees. Near the burn Nacimiento Station, we saw coming up around the corner a big Caterpillar five-yard articulating loader. It was the county. Other equipment was following, attending to details. They started down the west side, and as we said goodbye. By the time we got home, we could see the loader on Nacimiento Ferguson approaching the area where we had seen photos. They were moving through amazingly fast. They could likely be at Highway One in another hour, but they shouldn't work after dark. In fact, they were able to punch through, so they were able to get through. It's a great relief to have the likely use of Nacimiento Ferguson, at least to the east. Federal and state inspectors are expected next week. This was one of the reasons why they were working on a Sunday, to give them access. The other reason we were told is that they wanted to help stranded residents." A great thanks to the county and many other people for providing the helpful work and to be able to clean and to clear at least that side of, of the mountain road. There's still a lot more to be done, but at any rate, thank you for letting me read that. You know, honestly, I felt like it was an old war movie, and all of a sudden, you know, you turn the corner and here come the Marines. I was so thankful for the appreciation that the local residents just showed, and I'm so appreciative of Public Works for, for the work that you're doing down there, and I know it's, it's really hard. The San Ardo crew has been just up and down that mountain in so many different, so many times, but at any rate, as you know, I'll be keeping in touch with you. The, the road is washed out in an area called Rat Creek, and it's at mile mark 30 down on, on Highway One. But again, you know, it's, it's a, it's a main thoroughfare for people trying to get from San Francisco to LA, and as much as we, as our hospitality industry depends on tourism, to have that route closed is really going to be a big impediment to us and to the recovering economy that we're all working so hard to do. So those are my remarks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Adams. So next up, we have item number 12, which is our County Administrative Officer comments and referrals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no referrals this week. I would like to thank all the board members for their comments today, both on the vaccine and on, on the storms. On the vaccine, I think everybody has been frustrated and challenged by the lack of supply, but that's no fault of those who are running the clinics, whether it's our four hospitals in the county, the County Public Health Bureau of the Health Department, the various clinics that we have, the, you know, there, there are various health clinics throughout the county who are stepping up and doing a great job providing the vaccine, and we just need more of it here locally, and as soon as we get it, we will keep pushing to make that, make that happen, to get into people's arms, and we know that, that's what everybody's looking for. And on the storms, you know, the, the, the crews are, you know, they work when, when the worst is happening, right? They're out there in the middle of the night when the storms are happening. You know, when, when the Carmel Lagoon is, is at its worst, it's always in the middle of the night, in the middle of a storm at a high tide, and they're battling both sides of it when they're out. of it when they're out there. I want to thank Supervisor Lopez for physically being out there, doing the work. We're not going to give him any extra pay for overtime, but, but he was, he was out there with his residents down in Chular, and calling me and asking for any advice I could give, and, and luckily, we were able to get some, tie in with Public Works and give him some real advice, rather than my advice as the CIO. I wish, it's not easy for me to be there, not be there in person, physically helping, which is what I'd prefer to do. But I, you know, the, the crews are, are amazing, and of course, all our fire departments throughout the, throughout the county. They're not county agen, entities, but they, they really do step up and work together with, with the county to try and help our residents, and it's, and it's a testament to our community. So thank you all, thanks board members, and of course, thank you to the Public Works crews who are out there in, in the middle of the night, doing their work.
I think we should keep Supervisor Lopez.
Maybe we need to get him one of those yellow vests, though, so people know who he is.
Yeah, totally. Good work.
Okay, next up, we have item number thirteen, and I will ask, I think, Charles, are you introducing this item?
Let me take a look. Sorry.
Madam Chair.
Nick Chullos. Okay, we'll have Nick Chullos do a brief introduction of this item.
Yes, this is an item having to do with changing some of the board appointments to committees, and I believe Supervisor Askew and Supervisor Adams are interested in essentially changing assignments. Supervisor Askew, I believe, is interested in joining Legislative Committee, and Supervisor Adams, I believe, is interested in joining the three CE policy board. And that would also, because of the, the relationship of the Legislative Committee to the CSAC Board membership, that would also mean that the other representatives, in this case Chair Askew, on the Ledge Committee, would become the alternate to the CSAC Board of Directors. So that matters before the board for your consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Nick Chullos. And I'll just, you know, make a brief comment that, you know, the legislative, our county legislative platform, and a significant portion of the work that the county does is, is, is related to public safety net services, health and human services, which really are intended to improve and impact the lives of the working people in our community, many of whom are District Four residents. And so, a service on the Legislative Committee would really give me an opportunity to be more engaged and involved in these issues. So I would be, I would very much enjoy the opportunity to be appointed or allow for this, this change in appointments to occur, so that I could continue to advocate on behalf of my, my direct constituent. Supervisor Adams, did you have any comments that you wanted to share?
Just that I support this. I know it, it, it matters a great deal, and I think it would work well. I'm very thankful that Supervisor Askew and I had the opportunity just to talk about this, and it worked out well for both of us. Many people in my community are very interested in community power, so I'm, I'm really happy to be able to get to serve on that committee as well. It feels like it's the right thing for both of us.
And with that, I'll ask if there's any, this would require board action, so are there any questions or comments from board members?
Madam Chair, Alejo, I, I would just applaud you both for working, working it out and doing a little exchange here. I, I served with Supervisor Adams four years on the Legislative Committee, so I would welcome working with you on legislative matters, as, as they're, I'm as passionate and excited about dealing with legislative issues as you are Supervisor Askew. So I look forward to working together and being the voice for county residents on important legislative matters before, that come before, that impact our county. So, welcome, and I would make a motion to approve at the right time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your support, Supervisor Alejo, and I, I look forward to working with you. Any other comments from board members? All right, with that, any public comment, questions?
Motion to approve?
Seeing none, I have a motion to approve from Alejo.
Second.
A second from Supervisor Phillips, and we'll ask for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew?
Aye. The motion carries. We will move along to general public comments. Item number fourteen on our agenda. Is there anyone present in the audience or on Zoom who would like to make a general public comment? This would be for comments on any item that is not on today's agenda. Public comment is, we actually are in quite a, and we're running a little late this morning, so we'll do public comment for ninety seconds this morning. And our open meeting laws require that elected bodies conduct our business in public. However, we are limited to discuss items that are on the agenda, so we may not be able to respond directly to public comment. I'm not seeing anyone in chambers, and I'm not seeing anyone online. Oh, I do see one person online. Let's allow Eloise Shim ninety seconds for a public comment.
Okay, Eloise Shim, and I know on the agenda, there's some talk of the COVID vaccine, but I just wanted to make a comment about the distribution to people over sixty-five. I continually hear about the essential workers and other people that need to, that want to get vaccinated before the seniors. And I think by now, all people who are over sixty-five should have been vaccinated. They're the most vulner, vulnerable, and only about ten percent, if I hear right, of people over seventy-five have been vaccinated in Monterey County. So, I just don't think that the seniors should be thrown under the bus, and a lot of them don't have phones or connectivity to schedule appointments. They should, the process should be simple and easy. Any senior with a picture ID should be able to get in line and get vaccinated before other people. And the, all the people in nursing homes should be vaccinated by now, the seniors. So, yeah, that's what I have to say about that. No more lobbying for all the special interest groups.
Thank you, Eloise. We're, we're timed up here, but thank you so much for your comments, and I think we're, we're hearing, we really appreciate you sharing them. I don't see any other public comment, so we will close public comment and move along to our scheduled items, ten-thirty scheduled items. We have a, item number fifteen is a public hearing to consider continuing the hearing to March second on an appeal by Rosanna Radnor and Michael Smith from July thirtieth. The July thirtieth, twenty-twenty decision of the zoning administrator to approve a design approval for a fence ranging in height from four to six feet, and to consider waiving the appeal fees. I believe we have a request to continue this. Is Liz Gonzalez or Craig Spencer available to verify that, or speak to that? Do we have Craig Spencer or Liz Gonzalez on the line?
Madam Chair, Craig Spencer with Monterey County.
Hi, Craig. Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. So, we are requesting a continuance. I apologize, I had another call come in as the discussion was happening that got me sidetracked. But we're requesting that this item be continued to March second, I believe, and Liz Gonzalez is available if you have questions. The reason for the continuance was some unexpected delays in getting some information, and we have the information we need, and will be prepared to return to the board in March.
Great, thank you so much for the update. Are there any supervisors who have questions or comments? Is there any member of the public who has questions for public comment? If you're on Zoom, you can use the, the raise hand feature. If you're calling in, you would need to press star nine to raise your hand. Seeing no one in the public, and seeing no hands raised from the board, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Lopez, move staff recommendation?
Second.
Phillips, second.
Thank you. So I have a, a motion from Lopez, and a second from Phillips to continue this scheduled item number fifteen to March second. Could we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew?
Aye. The motion carries. We'll see you guys back here on March second. Next up, item number sixteen is to receive a presentation from the Monterey County Children's Council for the nineteen-twenty annual report from Children's Council Chair, our very own Elsa Jimenez. Let's see here, do we have Elsa on the line?
Yes, good morning.
Oh, wonderful. Welcome, thank you for joining us, Elsa, in this capacity with the Children's Council. Move right ahead.
Thank you for having me. Great. So, as stated, I'm Elsa Jimenez. I'm the Health Director for Monterey County, but today, I am pleased to be serving as the current Chair of our Monterey County Children's Council, and being able to present to you our fiscal year nineteen-twenty annual report. So the action for today is for the board to receive and accept our annual report. So the annual report is a local and state snapshot documenting the status of our children and youth, with the hopes that it will help stakeholders make informed decisions regarding public policy issues and support for organizations serving this population. In the annual report, we report data and track trends for twenty-eight indicators, so that we have a better understanding of how our children are faring over time. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, much of the data remained unchanged from prior year, and in this presentation, I will be highlighting updated data for indicators marked with an asterisk. This is a summary of the data that will be highlighted for birth to age eighteen, again, noting the ones with an asterisk will be covered today. And this one is for birth to five. And lastly, this is ages six to eighteen. In Monterey County, we are experiencing a consistent decline in the number of children supported by CalWorks due to several reasons. You know, families are needing to relocate to other counties due to the lack of availability of housing and the high cost of living in our county. Our DS, our Department of Social Services staff helped to support these families with relocating to other counties. Additionally, potential concerns over public charge may also be influencing families' decisions to not enroll in CalWorks. In fiscal year two thousand fifteen, thirteen point three percent of our county's childrens were supported by CalWorks compared to only about eight point six percent of our children in fiscal year two thousand twenty. This data is released every four years, and as such, impacts will be noted far after the event has occurred. As a result of the pandemic, we expect to see an increase in the percentage of children living below poverty for the periods two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four. Since that critical incident that occurred in our county in two thousand sixteen, the Department of Social Services has implemented many policy changes to its service delivery model. With the pandemic came sheltering in place and distance learning, creating a situation where there are less trusted eyes on our children and youth, and therefore, we saw a decrease in the number of referrals. As we resume a new normal, and children are able to return to in-person learning and other programming, we anticipate an increase in the number of referrals. The question on our mind is, what are we doing now to ensure that our systems serving children are prepared to ensure that they are more vigilant and alert for noticing signs of possible abuse and neglect, and that our CPS system is prepared to receive an influx of referrals? In our county, we prioritize family stabilization services and supports, and as such, are seeing a decline in the number of children in foster care. We are implementing more voluntary interventions and supports for parents and other relatives. Prior to removing a child from their home for placement in foster care, we implement a six-month placement trial with the relative or a trusted family friend. These strategies are more labor-intensive, yet are what is best for the child, the family, and our community. I would like to commend our Department of Social Services staff for working so hard to make family stabilization successful with half of the staffing capacity they've had from prior years. Our total enrollment in public schools has essentially been flat, as our annual births are pretty stable. There is less than a one percent decrease in total enrollment over time. This count is captured on what we call Census Day, which is the first Wednesday in October of every year. There was a slight increase in the number of students enrolled in our free or reduced price meals in Monterey County schools. Knowing the number of students that qualify for free and reduced price meals helps to determine the scale and scope of efforts needed to support this population. This program is the best proxy for poverty within our school-aged children. And during the pandemic, districts quickly pivoted and were successful in continuing to distribute meals to our local families. The total official count of students that were homeless on Census Day decreased slightly from the prior year. Students experiencing homelessness have lower graduation rates, and without proper supports for the whole child, they may struggle to thrive in the classroom. As a reminder, this does not include students who had housing insecurity later in the school year, or who were not officially identified as homeless, meeting the mechanical requirements. Again, this is a count that is done on that Census Day. For the second year in a row, we have seen a decrease in the students, number of students who are currently identified as English learners. Monterey County remains one of the three counties in California with the highest percentage of students that are English learners, and highest percentage of students that have ever been an English learner. Calusa and Imperial County, in case you were wondering, are the other two counties. The last two years have also set local records for the number of students who have demonstrated language skills that allow them to reclassify as fluent in English as comparable to an average native English speaker. Again, a testament to the supports that are provided in our schools for our English learners that allow them to be reclassified. Graduation rates have fluctuated over time. Monterey County now has a slightly higher graduation rate than California as a whole. Education provides the foundation for young people to realize their fullest potential as productive, successful members of society. The graduation rate is a standard measure of basic academic performance, and it is generally considered a minimum requirement, requirement for entry into the professional workforce, and is an essential prerequisite for additional education and training. We know that greater economic earnings, health, and social well-being correlate strongly with educational levels. Monterey County dipped to just below the California rate in the last fiscal year. The number of students who dropped out from the cohort as a portion of the total cohort is reported as a dropout rate. We have experienced about a twenty-six percent decline in both misdemeanor and felony referrals to probation since fiscal year two thousand fifteen. Although we don't have enough data to say definitively what this decline may be attributed to, we believe that the increased availability of supports for our children and families throughout the early childhood years, both in the community, in schools, and through the justice system, have all played a critical role. Now I'm going to let you know a little bit about the work that the council completed during this reporting period. Prior to July, we conducted a survey with our general membership to determine what the focus for fiscal year nineteen-twenty would be. The group expressed an interest in better understanding services available, gaps and opportunities for influencing policy change and behavioral health services for our zero to twenty-four-year-olds. For the first nine months of that fiscal year, the council received numerous presentations from agencies supporting children and youths' behavioral health needs. With the pandemic, as you can imagine, the, the topic quickly shifted to better understanding COVID-19, and the impacts that it would have on our children and youth, and what we were going to do as a system to ensure that services, education, and support for our youth and families continued. Lastly, our annual report highlights previous initiatives of the council and areas of focus that continue serving our youth and children to this very day. Just to point out, one, Community Alliance for Safety and Peace is still an active intervention that's happening in our community that is spearheaded by the City of Salinas. Now I would like to hand it over to my colleague, Sonia Kohler, who's the Director of the Bright Beginnings Early Childhood Initiative, a current initiative of our Monterey County Children's Council. Are you on with us, Sonia? Are you on with us Sonia? Um, can we check to-
Elsa, we're promoting Sonia to panelist. She'll be-
Okay, great.
-to participate in just a moment.
Thank you.
Good morning. I believe I'm on. Is that not only my perception?
We've got you Sonia. Thank you for your patience.
So, um, good morning Chair Askew, good morning Supervisors, good morning fellow constituents. I'm Sonia Kohler, the Director of Bright Beginnings, the Early Childhood Development Initiative. And about ten and a half months ago, Elsa and I sat side by side, really close in the chambers to present to you, just as we went into our first shelter in place. And little did we know what lay ahead. And while much has changed, I'm honored to be here today to share also what has not changed, which is the dedication of our county's Early Childhood Champions in the Bright Beginnings Initiative to together ensure all children have what they need to succeed in life. Elsa, could you go to the next? Through our countywide strategic framework developed with about thirty-plus agencies and community input a few years ago, our collective goal was defined to double the number of children ready for kindergarten universally and to close the equity gap. What we've learned since was, since we set this goal, is that what we actually need to address is the readiness of our systems to meet children and their families where they are to support development and well-being centered on race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. It's been several years since we last conducted the kindergarten readiness assessment. And if all falls into place, the next assessment will roll out this fall, now called the School Systems Readiness Assessment, which will also help us assess the impact of the pandemics on the well-being of our young, young children. Next line. The Bright Beginnings Initiative, at the Bright Beginnings Initiative, we bring together three change frameworks. One of systems change, one of collective impact, and also designing our work around our core principles, which is what brings the heart and soul into our work, such as addressing the interconnectedness of our systems, a holistic view of the individual, equity, and co-creation. Next. Our ten strategies fall into four key areas. A fair system of early education, such as the policies and practices, and the less visible stuff like power dynamics and mental models. We also address that families are supported by coordinated holistic care and services. We support families to be resilient and caregivers to be prepared. We also have cross-cutting strategies focused on funding, capacity building, and advocacy. Next Elsa. Here we see the organizational highlights of the initiative, which I'll just highlight two aspects that have really taken off since 2019. And that's mutually reinforcing activities and our learning culture. The backbone team and many of the initiative's partners, such as BHC, MCOE, the Health Department, and First Five have really been learning and acting together to address systemic racism in education and health systems. For example, by updating the school systems readiness assessment. Further, through new continuous improvement processes internally, we are seeing more and more connection between our projects that we support, such as between the Maternal Mental Health Task Force and the Home Visiting Coordination Hub, building that synergistic effect that we expect of the collective impact model. Next. Let's jump right into looking at some of those collaborative change projects. Next line. But first, when I say "we," I don't mean just the fantastic backbone team that supports this work. I mean the bigger "we," all the Early Childhood Champions that make this work happen on the ground that you see here on the slide. And there's many more that, that really should be on there as well. I'll keep updating it. It happens almost daily. Next line. Here's a list of all the projects that the Bright Beginnings Backbone supports through project facilitation and management, evaluation and monitoring support, community organizing, and research and capacity building. This is organized according to our strategic plan. If you can see the colors, the same colors per key drivers. And you'll see that several, several of the projects connect between areas. I'd be here all day if I tried to share highlights from all of them. So let's just look at a few. Next line. So first, the Kinder Festival in Greenfield, which focuses on enrollment in TK and kindergarten, has been growing strong for five years. And the survey results of parents attending say they really value the support to onsite enroll their children in kindergarten and transitional kindergarten. The Maternal Mental Health Task Force is broadening their outreach every year. And this year got at least one grant for a training series. I think there was another one and I just don't have the, that I newly learned of as well. And then the Home Visiting Partner, Home Visiting Hub, the partners of the Home Visiting Hub received two new grants to support that work. One to support the actual coordination of home visiting services across agencies. And then another to integrate more deeply maternal mental health into the Nurse-Family Partnership Program at the Health Department. Next line. In the Family Friendly Business Strategy, in addition to doing our ongoing certifications of businesses, we are working to better integrate the early care and education sector into economic development and the business community. During the pandemic, this need has been becoming more and more evident to folks that don't usually think of early childhood development. At this year's or last year's California Forwards Annual Economic Summit, we heard childcare and education coming to the forefront and loudly called out as vital to the economic recovery in our state. And not just by me or some of the common suspects, but also by the unusual suspects. Next line. During the onset of the shelter in place last year, I expected many of our projects to go dormant as we ramped up response to the pandemic. Much to my surprise, almost all just became stronger and more dedicated. For example, the Mamás de Salinas Abogán. They continue to be an anchor in the community promoting early childhood development. And like our Mama Maria Carmen Pata, who anchored us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, they support each other and their networks, continuing to advocate for early childhood out in the community virtually. It no longer looks like this as it does on the slide. Next. The Mamás joined with Building Healthy Communities, Moheres Anación, CCA, COPA, many other community organizations to reach out to low-income families, offering stipends and other resources. And just as importantly, simply connecting within the community during hard times. This is a unique approach integrating community organizing, capacity building of community leaders, needs data collection, and direct cash assistance. In a time of disruption, it really takes deep commitment and courage of these individuals to do this integrated work. And I really laud all of the community leaders in those groups who have been doing this tirelessly since March and continue to. Bright Beginnings, along with Bright Futures, had the honor of supporting this process by co-creating survey tools and protocols that are relationship-based, completing data analysis and that try to highlight the inequities and systems barriers. Here on the slide, you see some of that data. The process and data emerging is worthy of its own presentation, perhaps another day. But just quickly from last year's report, the data shows that employment, housing, and health were top challenges for families. We're working on the next report. It should come out in a few weeks and then another one later in spring. Next line. Last year, our website collaboratively produced MontereyCountyChildCare.org rolled out and has been instrumental in coordinating childcare referrals, helping parents find childcare during the pandemic, even though it has been limited. And, um, and this week, we are starting to roll out updates on the educators page to support the vaccination process, which we're helping to coordinate with MCOE, the Health Department, and our fellow Phase One Beer Tier Two folks in Ag and Hospitality, ensuring that we get the vaccination out to the estimated sixteen hundred licensed childcare and education providers that serve 10,000 children and the countless informal childcare providers that touch the lives of most young children in the county. Next line. Some of this, I'll try to summarize some of the work we've been doing in the response and recovery since March that we have been co-leading along with the Childcare Planning Council, Quality Matters, and United Way. We meet bi-weekly with multi-sector, multidisciplinary Early Childhood Champions. We push out weekly COVID digests, help distribute PPE and other supplies, and link educators with financial and mental health supports, and so much more. And you can see some of the statistics here on the slide. At a low point, we had about twenty percent of our centers open. We're back to about eighty-plus percent. Some of them, those that are related to schools, are doing distance learning. But many also in person. And we're, what has remained surprisingly steady throughout the pandemic are our childcare homes that have been, eighty-five percent have been opened throughout, providing in-person care. One silver lining of the pandemic is that we get to strengthen our systems, especially to center on equity, diversity, and inclusion. And then strengthening our own networks and relationships within the ECE community and across into other sectors that really just helps get the work done. Bright Beginnings is also in the supportive ranks of the Community Health, the COVID Community Health Workers Group, where we ensure, help to ensure the needs of young children are being addressed by, in that community, providing some evaluation support and working together to provide mental health supports for the CHWs through our Trauma Informed Practices Capacity Building Project. Next. So what have we learned during the pandemic that'll help move us forward? We know we really need to uplift the community voice and needs, especially families with young children. And not only uplift, but actually meet them, especially by addressing basic needs and mental health. And through Bright Beginning, some of those systems barriers that prevent us from doing so. We need to integrate early care and learning into the early care and learning sector and economic resiliency and recovery work, especially investing in the growth of the sector. We need more childcare. We need to center on race, equity, diversity, and inclusion as we rebuild our systems. And we need to emphasize the navigability of our services and care coordination. Everyone is asking for that across the board, from families to the service providers themselves. When we coordinate, we do better. We've accomplished a lot that just touches on it, and there is so much more to be done. I'm here to delve into details or answer any questions. Thank you. I do want to thank, before I go, not only the wonderful Bright Beginnings Backbone team and all of the collaborative project participants, all the partners together that make this happen. And a special thanks to our co-chairs Francine Rod of First Five and the Public Health Officer Ed Moreno for their deep support of Bright Beginnings. And of course, together, we can all support our young children, families, and our beloved Monterey County. Thank you.
Thank you for that Sonia, for that presentation and update on our Bright Beginnings. And with that, we'll hand it over to the Board for any questions that they and the public may have. Additionally, I just wanted to make a comment, if I may, recognizing that Maria Carmen Pata, who led our Pledge of Allegiance today, is one of our strong advocates and member of our Mamás Initiative in the community.
Thank you so much Elsa. Thank you so much Sonia for both the work that you're doing for our families as well as the presentation here today. I'll open it up to the Board of Supervisors for any questions and comments. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. Sonia, it's wonderful to see you. I remember so, so clearly our early days and our very early mornings at Community Alliance for Safety and Peace. It's wonderful to see you. I'm just particularly proud of the, of the work that Bright Beginnings has done and all of the work that the collaborative has pulled together. And I think that we can honestly see the outcome when you look at the number of the, of the metrics that have either improved or have declined. I, I wish we didn't have to go so very quickly over them because there were so many negative ones that had decreased and so many positive ones that had increased. It really is, it just touches my heart and I make, I'm so happy that our county is, is engaged with this in the way that we are. I did just have one question for you though Elsa in one of the numbers that you gave. And it's, it's the one issue that is just like very difficult to move. And that was the number of homeless kids that you mentioned? That was not including the McKinnon Vento children? That was simply, that was, that was the total number of children that are homeless based on the actual count that we do annually? It was shocking to me. And, and I'm wondering if that's that number, what is the McKinnon Vento number?
Thank you for that question Supervisor Adams. And I'm wondering if we have Dr. Damine Gus or somebody else from the Office of Education in the room to be able to answer? Um.
Not to worry. I can get the number another time.
Well, we can get back to you on, on that Supervisor Adams. Sorry, I don't have an answer.
No, that's okay. I seem to recall when the, when you showed the slide, you indicated it was not McKinnon Vento, that it was just, that it was, I mean, just, it was like seven, more than 7,000 children, which is huge.
Yes, if I may. So in fiscal year 1920, we had a little over seventy-six hundred children identified as homeless. And remember, this count is done on Census Day, which is that first Wednesday in October. But you know, we do know that during the school year, their children may experience in housing insecurity. The number does not change from the count that is assessed that first Wednesday in October, which is the Census Day. And it may not also include those who were not officially identified as homeless meeting the McKinnon eventual requirements. And if you might recall, the, that, those requirements are very specific in terms of identifying homeless. And we do recognize that we have many of our residents that are not meeting that definition. But we recognize that maybe experiencing homelessness, for example, in terms of not having adequate sheltering, being in multifamily housing. So these are just individuals that lacked a regular, fixed, adequate nighttime residence.
Thank you for that explanation. And I, I hope I get, I can ask Dr. Gus myself what the number is. So thank you very much Elsa. Great job.
And Supervisor Phillips.
Yeah, it, it, thank you for the presentation of both you. And, and I took away a lot of positive children living below the poverty level, decreasing children in foster care, decreasing free and reduced lunch meal programs, increasing juvenile misdemeanor and felony arrests, decreasing student dropout rate, decreasing. I, I guess my question is, I have a real concern about these kids. And I'm sure everybody does. These kids being out of school for a year when it's, the peer group is so important to them. And, and distant learning isn't as conducive as, as it might be. But what do you see? You see long-range impacts on this on children or any thoughts on that?
Sure, I can maybe begin to answer and then maybe Sonia has some thoughts as well. You know what we're hearing from our families is that many of, and our healthcare providers, is that many of our children are presenting with higher levels of anxiety, higher levels of depression for the fact that they are, you know, sheltered at home. We know that many families have to continue to work. Many of our parents are frontline essential workers and have never had an opportunity to not work outside of the home. And so many of our children are left to care for younger siblings and other individuals in the house as they help them to navigate their distance learning. We know that for younger children, particularly that stimulation with other kids, being in a classroom setting is so critical to not only their educational attainment of their goals, but also for their mental well-being. And so, you know, I think our council overall is concerned about not only the learning loss that many of our children are experiencing, but also the higher levels of anxiety and depression and potential needs for additional mental health supports for the children and the families as we begin to transition hopefully to a new normal in, in the near term. for the children and the families as we begin to transition, hopefully, to a new normal in the near term.
Thank you. I know when I was a kid, you know, 12, 13, if all of a sudden I had to be stuck at home with my parents all day and not seeing all my crew or everything, it'd be a big adjustment, you know, so.
I'd like to add to that. Thank you for all of that, Elsa. We know that there is going to be a long-term, short-term, and long-term effects for all ages of children. And I think what's harder is collecting the data that shows what we're facing so that we can best design our solutions. And I'm really excited about all the Community Health Workers activities, the community outreach that folks like the Mamas and BHC and Mohandas, et cetera, are doing. And all of this really building community connections in the community where we can collect the stories and hear more and get data of what's actually happening, and so that we can best address them and directly address them with these relationships in our community. We can get the services out more quickly, help families navigate the system that's there as well. One challenge is our services, having enough services to address, especially the mental health issues. Before COVID, there was, we knew we didn't have enough services in place, and that's just, it's still the case, but the need is even greater. So looking forward, those are some of the challenges.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lopez?
I just wanted to thank all the partners in bringing this collaborative together, even through a crisis, it's commendable. And I want to thank everybody who contributes their data to make sure that we can make the strongest case for Monterey County as we continue to go through not just this pandemic, but the crisis that we have, including the shortage of housing in Monterey County, and how that impacts our families. I think the data points that you've put together and shared with us today help us make those arguments at several different levels, especially on those boards and committees that we all sit on throughout the state. And so I want to thank all the partners for continuing to deliver this good, clean, strong data to us. And just request that, moving forward, you know, the focus on the pandemic and any points that you can find that uniquely can be touched on through this be brought up and shared with this board so that we can make sure to respond to any arising challenges from this current crisis that we're in. But thank you all for your work and for working together.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. Supervisor Alejo?
No, I appreciate, just, I know this is an annual presentation we get, and it's always good to see the progress and the work. But in light of this pandemic, I think the concerns raised by my colleagues are very real. I don't think we've had a more in-depth conversation, but it's certainly merited. We know that this pandemic is getting our students further behind, and we know it's having some severe impacts on the learning of our kids. I can speak for my own, I got my nephews and nieces here in Salinas that every child learns differently. And I know for one of my nieces, like, you know, it's hard to stay focused just sitting at a computer. She needs to be in a classroom. She needs to have that supervision of a teacher to stay focused in her class. And so I could see from my own family that this is having a very detrimental impact, and they are getting behind. So it's under very difficult circumstances for our teachers to teach and our students to learn. And I just want our residents to know that, I think all my colleagues share the severe concern of hopefully, as soon as this vaccination program could happen and that our schools could vaccinate their staff and do the reopening plans. I think there's a commitment from all of us to move, to open our schools as soon as possible for all the reasons stated, because we recognize, you know, the short and long-term effects it's having on our kids. And I think we would have normally a way to assess, at least just in terms of how students are getting behind in the reading and math. Our schools are required, school districts are required to test kids in third through eighth grade and high school students every year to see how they're achieving in reading and math. And I know last year, I think that was waived. This year's probably going to be waived because of the pandemic. So those normal assessment tools to see, you know, the progress or the amount of students getting behind in those two areas, those tools are not going to be available for our school districts and for our parents to be able to really assess how we're doing. I think once the pandemic's over and we're able to assess students, I think that will give us a picture, a better picture with data using these standardized tests to be able to make that determination. And that's just the kids in our schools. But we also know that those childcare centers are also, you know, those really, the earliest grades are especially among the most important in a young child's life. So I think all of us, I think it's important for us to just recognize that. And so all this work that normally this coalition of organizations and partners and county staff do, I think it just highlights how much more important it is now and these next few years as we're dealing with the aftermath of really trying to better address the needs of our most vulnerable and our youngest populations in Monterey County. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. I'll make, Sonia, go ahead. Did you have a response for that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Askew, and thank you Supervisor Alejo for your comments. Kids definitely, and adults learn differently. And I just want to reiterate, we do have the School Systems Readiness Assessment. We plan to roll that out this fall, which is different than some of the ones in assessments in the older ages. But that will give us an idea by this time next year what some of the things are that we're facing and how we can address those supports. So some data will be coming sooner than later. Not all assessments are on hold. So just wanted to...
Yeah, and when those become available, we'd love to get a, hopefully, a report back so we could, using that, we could get a picture of what those assessments are telling us. Thank you.
Definitely, and they will be comparable to years before there are adjustments being made in the tools so that we can do that. So you will definitely get it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I just, thank you again for all of the work. I'm so proud of our county for supporting early childhood education. I'm so proud of our county for putting our money where our commitment is and financially investing through our budget cycle in the requests that come forward from Bright Beginnings for capacity building, for maternal mental health, for so many things that you've brought forward that represent the needs that you're identifying in the community. You're bringing them forward, and it gives the Board of Supervisors the opportunity to put those financial investments in place. I want to, one of the things that I've always been so impressed with the work that Bright Beginnings is doing is that there's this deep understanding that in order to support children, we have to support their parents. And we can talk a lot about the systems and services that support young learning and young children. And really, that centers around making sure that those mothers have prenatal care. It centers around making sure that high-quality childcare is available so that parents can earn a living to support their children. When we talk about children living in poverty, we're talking about opportunities for their parents to have living wage employment. And, you know, as a parent who has had a child in school, home, since March, I'm gonna, you know, just acknowledge that, you know, I've been lucky to be able to work from home. But the challenges that exist, my ability to have flexible work, my ability to have my child show up in the background of a meeting, my ability to have a flexible work schedule where I can make sure that he's able to log on to and log off of his classes, you know, that's the entire community supporting me as a parent so that I can support him as a learner who's at home. So I just, I really want to thank you for all of the work that you've done. I think there's a, I'm just, again, so proud of Monterey County and so proud of this board for the commitment that we have, the shared commitment that we have to supporting children and families in our community. With that, I'll see if there's any public comment on this item. And for anyone who's watching on Zoom, you may raise your hand. For anyone who's calling in, I believe it's *9, and it will allow you to speak. I see one comment, and I am, we are into our lunch hour. I mean, we do have quite a bit of closed session items to continue. So we'll do public comment for 90 seconds, if that's okay. And I'll open it up to David Dubrowski.
Hello, this is David Dubrowski. I work for the Monterey County Office of Education. I just wanted to clarify a short little bit about Supervisor Adams' questions regarding the counts for homeless students. And those numbers do reflect students identified under McKinney-Vento. There may be additional students that are identified elsewhere throughout the school year that didn't go into those numbers, is what we were trying to express within the answer before. So just wanted to clarify that. Please feel free to reach out to the County Office of Education or me personally for more information about those numbers. Thanks.
Thank you. Big relief. Thank you.
Thank you so much for answering our questions, David. I don't see any other public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board, and I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that. Thank you.
We have a motion from Supervisor Adams.
Second.
And a second from Supervisor Alejo. Roll call vote from the clerk, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, Askew?
Aye. All right, and with that, the motion carries, and we will be resupping to lunch for closed session. We will be back here at 1:30 to reconvene and receive our weekly update on COVID response. Thank you.
Mic twelve test. Mic six test. Mic two test.
Staff PC test, staff PC test.
Clerk PC test. Podium test.
Wire list two.
172.12 173.12 174.12 177.12 180.12 185.12 190.12 201.12 210.12 240.12 220.12 250.12 230.12 260.12 298.12
Mic twelve test. Mic six test. Mic two test.
Staff PC test, staff PC test.
Clerk PC test. Podium test.
Wire list two. 172.12 173.12 179.12 140.12 148.12 149.12 150.12 151.12 Wire list two. 172.12 173.12 177.12 180.12 150.12 153.12
It is February second at one forty-four and we are reconvening for our afternoon, uh, session.
Okay, I think we've got everybody back. It is February 2nd at 1:44 and we are reconvening for our afternoon session. Do we need to do another roll call?
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo, Phillips, Lopez, and Adams appearing via video conference and Chair Supervisor Root ask you appearing in person.
Thank you. And I will ask our interpreter, Jocelyn Martinez, to announce our Spanish services that are available on Zoom by selecting the globe icon at the bottom of your screen from a desktop computer. Jocelyn Martinez, intérprete español, se le avisa que hay interpretación en vivo vía Zoom. En su pantalla si selecciona el globo abajo de la pantalla y selecciona lenguaje español va a tener acceso a eso. En estos momentos no tenemos este servicio para los que llaman por teléfono. Great. Thank you so much. And I will also mention that we are offering closed captioning via Zoom as well. And for anyone who's watching on one of our live streaming channels, you may also choose to join us directly on the Zoom webinar. And our webinar ID number is 224397747. Our first item for this afternoon is a briefing on COVID-19, including impacts, actions, proposals, and plans to address. Nick Chula.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. We have five items that make up our COVID update for this afternoon for you. And I'll just go over them in order. The first one is a public health update by Dr. Moreno and Christie Michi focusing on state and local metrics, testing update, and vaccine supply. Then we'd like to talk about the mass vaccination site planning and give you an update there. Gary Malley and Mike Dur from our staff will give that update. And then we've asked Dr. Gray and Dr. Walls to discuss the status of Natividad Medical Center patient load and any other hospital update that they could give. And then our HR Director Irma Ramirez-Bow and Ariana Hurtado from her staff will give you an update on the COVID volunteer program that is launching. And then finally, Nick Pascui from TMB Creative will give you a messaging update in terms of COVID messaging. So that's the rundown, Madam Chair, for this afternoon's update. Thank you.
Fabulous. And thank you for organizing everyone to join us. Dr. Moreno, do we have you on the line? And Christie Michi, passing the mic over to you.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Edmira, Monterey County Health Officer and Director of Public Health. Chair, ask you, can you see my first slide?
We can. It's up.
Excellent. All right. All right. Okay, we'll start with COVID data and metrics. As far as the data goes, we're in our second surge. And fortunately, each of these past few weeks, we've seen a decline in the total number of cases here in Monterey County. And also steadying and decline in the number of cases that required hospitalization, which is a good thing. And this is a case rate where we average the daily cases over seven days. And it tends to smooth out the curve a little bit to let us see more clearly the trends. And this appears to be a clear trend that the case rate is consistently decreasing. And this is consistent with what the state of California is reporting statewide. And this also is a familiar graph that shows that fortunately, the number of hospitalizations due to COVID are decreasing. And our hospital bed census has decreased from over 200 average day, daily average, to less than 150. So it's a significant decrease in the number of individuals. And so when we see a decrease in cases and followed by a decrease in hospitalizations, we usually expect a decrease in the number of deaths, which would be very, very much a good thing for us here in Monterey County. Moving on to the regional stay-at-home order, we aren't, we are not under the regional stay-at-home order. And that is because the formulas that the state are using to project where we will be in terms of our ICU bed availability over four weeks keeps us with a bed availability above 15%. And that's true for all regions and all counties here in California. And because of that, we are back to where we were, I think it was early December, and we were in the blueprint framework. And going back to our adjusted case rate of, as of January 23rd, as reported by the state, is 52.3. And which is greater than seven, which puts us in the purple tier. And but going back to, if we look at our case rate, adjusted case rate over the last four reporting periods by the state, we could see that similar to our data that I showed you, the state's estimate of our case rate continues to decline. And you can see that we are, if this continues, we would be approaching a case rate of 25, which is a state threshold for considering allowing kids to go back to school. And if it continues, hopefully, we can get to where we were before, trying to get to the, as a community, as a county, getting to meet the requirements for moving into red tier where there are more, fewer restrictions on what people can do and business practices. We are also tracking again, now that we're out of the stay-at-home order and back on the blueprint, looking at case rates and the case, excuse me, positivity rates. And the positivity rates are declining. Our highest positivity rate according to state was 20. We're down to 13.3 here. And so if this continues, we're hoping that we, as a community, by continuing to cover, use face coverings and staying at home as much as possible, washing our hands, may be able to get close to a criteria for red tier. This is really, I think, really important. Oh, anyone that wants to look specifically at their sector or looking at a sector that they want to go to and what's open and with what restrictions, again, you can go to the state's website and look at the state's blueprint for safer economy and see what's allowed while we are in the purple tier. I just want to point out, we're showing really good progress with our case rates and our hospitalizations. And this is really important for us. If we're going to continue to, continue to decrease the case rates, the number of people with COVID-19 and the number of deaths due to COVID-19, we really have to continue to stay at home, use face coverings, particularly since we're getting close to Super Bowl weekend. And historically, when the Super Bowl is played, a lot of people gather from different households. And we're in a pandemic, and this is the biggest surge we've had thus far. So we're on the right direction heading down. We don't want to do anything that would slow this down and increase the cases. So it's very important during the Super Bowl that people don't mix up with other households because that's what contributed in part to this last surge when people were mixing for Thanksgiving and Halloween and Christmas and New Year's. More and more transmission was occurring. So this is another big event here, the Super Bowl. So I strongly advise people to not mix with other households. As far as testing, this is an updated slide that shows the week of January 30th. Salinas site continue to have high numbers. Seaside continue to have high numbers of people showing up that week. Castroville unfortunately dropped down to about half of the number of tests that were being conducted in the prior three weeks. And Solidad drive-through site also dropped down to less than half previously. So we are looking into why that's the case. We thought maybe it was the weather supervisors. And we know that that was around the time that we were having a lot of rain. But these two sites continued to perform pretty well. These two dropped, so I'm not sure it can be explained by the weather. So we're, and we did check, and Castroville and Solidad sites from what we understand, and checking in with those representatives, they did not, they didn't shut down. So it's not because they shut down and appointments were canceled. So we're not sure why this has decreased. But we do need to get more people in Castroville, coming to Castroville and Solidad for testing. It's very important for us, for people to know whether they're positive, whether they're infectious, so they can avoid, prevent spreading it to other people. I'm going to move on to just a brief update on variants of the virus in California. I did mention in previous presentation that California is very much interested, and we are as well, in our public health laboratory, in variants with the following characteristics, those that have the potential to become a dominant variant. Excuse me, a dominant variant, those that have an increased proportion of cases in California, those variants that are associated with large outbreaks, those variants that have increased transmissibility, meaning the spread's easier from one person to another, those that might be less responsive to treatments like monoclonal antibodies, those that are less detectable with current testing, meaning some variants, we hope not, some variants may in the future not be detected with our current testing equipment. Those that have increased virulence, meaning they cause worse symptoms and more hospitalizations and more deaths. And those that may not respond as well to vaccines. So those are the ones that we're most interested in. B117 variant, according, is, was what that was identified in, that had, excuse me, in California, I think in December. And the CDC suspects that it may become the dominant variant by March, just a couple of months from now. It transmits a lot easier for one person to another, which the concern there is that it might lead to another surge in cases. So that's just a brief update. And I think, I think there are 138 cases now in California. And I believe the Secretary Galley mentioned that it's been detected in five counties in California. As far as COVID-19 vaccine supply, as a reminder, the way the ordering process happens, the CDC divides up vaccine to distribute, to allocate to states through a formula that they use. And some of that goes to California Department of Public Health, but some of it also goes to federal prisons here in California and other federal agencies. Once CDPH knows how much is coming, some of that will go to, through a distribution process and formulas, some of that goes to large systems like Kaiser, some goes to state hospitals and state prisons. And then a portion of it goes to counties like Monterey County. Once we know what our allocation is, we speak to our providers that approve to place orders and receive vaccine. Once we agree on how much each provider is going to get that week, they place their orders. And then we review those orders. We approve them, and that order goes to California Department of Public Health. California Department of Public Health quickly sends those orders off to CDC, who then quickly sends it to Pfizer and Moderna. And they ship directly to providers. So we put in our order, I think between four and five o'clock every Thursday. And shipments actually arrive by, I think, Tuesday, sometimes even Monday, to providers here locally. Moving on to our COVID-19 vaccine, excuse me, California's COVID-19 vaccine plan. We are, we continue in Monterey County to vaccinate individuals of Phase 1A, which are healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities through the pharmacy partnership. That's where CBS and Walgreens go take vaccine to the residential facilities to vaccinate the residents and the healthcare workers there. And we are on Phase 1B vaccinating of this group 65 and older. We're focused right now, countywide, on 75 and older, who are much more vulnerable than 65 to 74. And I do know that estimates show that in order to get through all 75, people 75 years and older, it could take up to 19 weeks to administer the first dose. So we have a tremendous need and not enough vaccine. But why that group? It's because when it comes to risk of dying, if we compare people who are 75 and 84, 75, 84, and 85 and older to people who are in their twenties, compared to people in their twenties, a person who's 75 to 84 is 220 times more likely to die. And someone who's 85 years and older who are getting vaccinated now are over 600 times more likely to die. So by focusing on this group of living vaccine, we're saving lives. All right. And then our local vaccination planning. We did query, I share this again in case people in Monterey County didn't get a chance to see the presentation previously. Repeating this slide, I think it's important that people know that when we queried healthcare providers who are currently vaccinating residents here in Monterey County and asked them, given your current, your current staffing, how many people could you vaccinate a week if we had the vaccine available? And looking at our hospitals and their outpatient clinics, our own county-sponsored community points of distribution, our employer-based sponsored vaccines that are in the planning, planning stages, residential facility-based clinics and pharmacies, they could, we could vaccinate as a community about 17,000, administer 17,000 doses per week. But keep in mind, we only got a supply of about 2,000 to 4,000 per week. So there's a lot of capacity right now. But this does not include future capacity. For example, with our community pods, we have hundreds of individuals who have volunteered to assist in those pods. So we can ramp up and scale up capacity to exceed this amount if vaccine is available. So what are we already doing? We have already implemented strategies. One is our, as I mentioned, our health department community points of distribution. These are small and medium pods, up to 500 or 600 people a day. And we've got several of those that are still underway, and they can be scaled up. Excuse me, that should read 1,000, that should be 1,000 at the bottom here, 1,000 to 200 people per day. We also have a hospital and hospital clinic points of distribution. So hospitals have and continue, and they're beginning, I think they're finishing up, vaccinate, provide first and second doses to their own employees. And they are now starting to provide doses to healthcare workers that aren't associated with the hospital but need to get vaccinated. And here are just a few examples, supervisors, but also people who are 75 and older. So CHOMP, Community Hospital Monterey Peninsula, is using their own scheduling, appointment scheduling platform. So if somebody is looking to get vaccinated at CHOMP, they would need to go to the CHOMP website. SBMH, as I understand, is also using their own scheduling platform. And so someone would need to go to their website to explore getting a vaccine there. Natividad Medical Center and Memorial are still using the state's PREP mod or CalVAX appointment scheduling system. And we have the links on our website. So someone could come to our website for either NMC or me to see if there are any vaccine appointments available for those locations. Another strategy are, is working with our primary care providers. And our primary care providers have provided some points of distribution clinics primarily to vaccinate their own clinic employees. But they are now offering first doses and will be scheduling second dose appointments to vaccinate their patients who are 75 and older. And they can do that by looking through their electronic health records, run a report on their patients who are 75 and older, and then send text messages, emails, or phone calls to their patients to schedule an appointment to come in, and then schedule a second appointment with the same vaccine. So some of the clinics that are in the process of vaccinating or will be include Salinas Valley Memorial Healthcare System, Montage Medical Group, our own county, Monterey County Clinic Services, and also clinic that is available there via Salinas. Strategies in development include working with pharmacies, not just in the skilled nursing facilities, but in their retail stores. As I mentioned, employer-organized clinics in partnership with healthcare providers who would actually give the vaccine. And also the large, ramping up, scaling up our own community points of distribution to 1,000 to 2,000 people a day. So these are strategies in development. I know Mercy Operations Center with Gary Malley at the lead is assisting in identifying spots, locations in Monterey County that would suitable to host these larger points of distribution. And another strategy is, so one of the strategies is Safeway Stores. They are now receiving allocations, distributions of the vaccine. This is the Moderna vaccine. They will be vaccinating people 75 years of age and older. Their hours are 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM by appointment at these two locations in Salinas. And individuals that are 75 and older can go to our website. They are not using our scheduling appointment, but we have their information on our website. So you can follow the links from this first link. And if you go to the first link that you see on this page, that will get you to the link to, where you can get to the Safeway site to see if there are appointments and schedule appointment when it's available. You will be asked to complete an immunization consent form, which is not our form. It's Safeway's form. Uh, you will be asked to complete an immunization consent form, which is not our form, it's Safeway's form. So that's in development and hopefully, uh, by the end of this week or next week, uh, people will be able to get vaccinated at, uh, some of the Safeway stores, Safeway pharmacies, excuse me. Another strategy in development is with a Visiting Nurses Association or VNA. Uh, they are partnering with CHISP, uh, to bring COVID-19 vaccine to individuals seventy-five and older at senior housing sites. Many of these people at the senior housing sites really would otherwise struggle to get to, uh, a clinic, um, to leave their, visit their housing and get to a clinic to get vaccinated. So first dose appointments, um, dates and appointments, uh, hopefully will be scheduled, uh, soon. And we're looking at some, they're looking at scheduling some appointments through the month of February. So a variety of strategies, uh, are underway, uh, some in development, which will be implemented quite, uh, very shortly. And then, uh, this is, uh, uh, supervisors, uh, we've been looking at, uh, where is vaccine in Monterey County? We've got reports of vaccine coming in, people want to know where it's, where it's gone. So this first slide shows where vaccine, how much vaccine, uh, Monterey County, um, public health has received, and where is it and where has it gone? I don't have this, um, information for other organizations. I just have for, for ours because I have direct, uh, access to our, our own reports. So we've received, um, uh, and we hope we would, we are looking to update this once a week. So most recently thirteen, about thirteen thousand doses have been, um, received or we've ordered, uh, to come to Monterey County. Most of that we received. Uh, the second column supervisor shows, uh, how much we've redistributed, meaning, for example, CHOMP here shows ninety-seven-five. We actually ordered nine-hundred-and-seventy-five doses of Pfizer. And then we, when they were ready for it, we transferred the Pfizer vaccine over to CHOMP. And you can see there's other organizations, uh, Clinic of the Salute, they not only receive their own vaccine, but we actually gave them some of our vaccines. So we've been strongly supporting Clinic of the Salute. And we have these other organizations that have also received distributions from us to help them in their vaccination efforts. We've also have down here reserved, uh, about five thousand doses. We are, we, we are still able to provide the second dose to people that received the first dose from us. So these vaccines, um, are going out this week to our clinics to give people their second vaccine. Um, and so they can complete this series. And then finally, these are, we've had, according to this column, the state immunization registry, we've given out just under three thousand, uh, vaccines, we've administered three thousand vaccines. But when we actually look at our own records, we've, uh, distributed, uh, almost four thousand vaccines. So this demonstrates that there are significant limitations to the state, uh, immunization registry. And so as much as possible, we want to rely on our own records. So approximately one thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-four doses, uh, right now are available in our department. And we'll be looking to either, uh, schedule an appointment for first, um, vaccines for more people. Uh, or we'll also look at our partners to see if anyone is in need of vaccine to continue their vaccine efforts. This, uh, does include information about the other, uh, agencies out there. And so this shows, uh, the variety of organizations that, uh, have been receiving, uh, shipments directly to them. Uh, for example, Big Star Health Center received two-hundred, uh, Clinics of Flute received their eight-hundred plus the additional that I mentioned earlier that we shipped to them directly from us. Um, and we have, um, the next row is what we can see in the state registry, how much they've administered. And in some cases, the amount that they've administered, for example, with, uh, here with, um, with, uh, excuse me, here's the good one, Nativity Medical Center, they received eight thousand doses. Um, they received, uh, care shows that they administered, uh, eighteen hundred. But, um, uh, this, and this is probably an update that Dr. Gray has, Gary Gray has, but, uh, they've, they've actually administered, uh, over four thousand doses. Um, and so the care system is not reporting accurately. So what we do, supervisors, to give you an estimate of how much has been administered in the county, we take, uh, if there's, if all we have is a care, uh, information, then that's what we, that's what we record here for us. If the, if a provider, uh, responds to our request to give us, tell us how much they've actually administered, we put it in this column. So, um, uh, doctors on duty, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight doses in the registry, but they let us know that they administer four-hundred-and-thirty. So that's the number we're going to use. So we add up those numbers, moving on to the next remainder of the, of the table. We added up with other vaccines that have been given to Monterey County residents. And we have about twenty-three thousand, estimated twenty-three thousand, but we really do think it's more than twenty-three thousand again, because we can't real, we, the care's data is not reliable. So, uh, on average, not average, um, if we want to get an idea of what percentage has been administered, if you look at the total vaccine received, um, by the, the county, um, not counting the amount that's on order that we haven't received or the amount that we've requested, uh, that we haven't received, it's about thirty-nine thousand that actually, has actually probably come into the county. And twenty-three thousand have people administered, uh, vaccines, so about almost sixty percent of the vaccine. It's a very rough estimate, but about sixty percent of the vaccine has been, uh, administered thus far. We also have other people who have been vaccinated through the federal pharmacy partnership. These are Monterey County residents, uh, at our skilled nursing facilities that have also been, uh, vaccinated. But this is probably an underestimate, and our state correctional facilities, um, in, uh, South County. These are a number of people who've also been vaccinated, again, probably underrepresented. So another three thousand people here who've been vaccinated in Monterey County. Oops, excuse me, and that's my update.
Thank you, Dr. Moreno. I think next up we have our, so we covered our public health update, our local and state metrics, our testing update. And I believe the mass vaccine site planning update is next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Do you want to do comments as we go? Is that, okay, we'll do comments and questions as we go. Okay, let's do that. And I see that we have Supervisor Lopez has some questions.
Yeah, Dr. Moreno, I think, I know I've, I've requested of this of, uh, of you in another meeting, and I just wanted to do it here for the public's sake. I think some demographics on, on where folks that are getting the vaccine are coming from would be critical. So if we could prepare that and bring it back for this board, it'd be appreciated. Um, and then lastly, uh, we're hearing that there's a new federal program that's rolling out to pharmacies and that there's some direct allocations. The news has broken to share that those two sites have been announced as being, uh, Monterey and Carmel. Uh, and so I'm a little disappointed in that, that decision based on all of the commitment from the federal government and the state government to equity. And so I think for us, I think at the end of this presentation, I'm going to request that our board consider taking a position of sending a letter to request that there be some consideration given based on equity and hotspots in Monterey County, uh, to other locations in our county. I think that it's unfortunate that those sites have been chosen, given where our hotspots are currently in Monterey County and the need is. And I know our boards continue to drum those issues, but just wanted to put that on the record and, and make sure that I, I shared with this board that that's what's out there, and I don't think we can wait a week to take that position.
And Supervisor Alejo.
I, I just want to echo Supervisor Lopez's statements, um, to see where those stores are located when the hotspots are in the Salinas Valley, more than anywhere else in the county, it's, it's certainly frustrating. Um, and I don't know if Dr. Moreno could tell us what, because then, then that, that raises the issue with Safeway. What, what Safeway pharmacies are going to, uh, make vaccine available throughout the county? Uh, do, do, are you able to answer that, that question today? And then secondly, um, um, I, I hope that down the road that we don't see a Nick, um, that the communities hardest hit by the pandemic, which we know what zip codes they are, are not being able to access these, um, at least at this point, those vaccines made available to the, the, those seventy-five and over. It's like those that are more tech savvy and could constantly have the time to get on their phone numerous times a day and see when spots are open, are able to get appointments. And those that don't have that support or don't know how to do it or where to go are getting left behind. And I, and I, I could just, I could just already kind of feel what, what's happening right now, that those, uh, poorest neighborhoods and the hardest zip, hit zip codes like nine-three, uh, nine oh-six and nine-three, nine oh-five. I, I just don't feel they're, they're getting equal opportunities to get, get those appointments. And with our technology and with our resources, I just feel that there's not a reason why to, not to make more vaccine clinics available in places like East Salinas that, and, um, uh, give priority to those residents that, that are most vulnerable from those most impacted neighborhoods and those overcrowded housing conditions. I don't see why there is a reason why we couldn't make a reservation system that gives a certain allotment to residents in those hardest-hit areas either. So there's at least two ways there, where we could be proactive and ensuring that our poorest residents and those living in the, under the most dangerous of conditions with multi-generational housing and congregate housing living conditions can have access to appointments. I, I don't want our story in Monterey County that we didn't look out for those who, who have the least resources, the least know-how and who are at the most risk. There's something that we can do about it now, as we're rolling out, and as we're going to, as we get more vaccine, we're going to roll out into other, um, categories of residents that are eligible. I think this is a time where we have to be proactive and address that need, uh, now. Uh, there's no reason why we cannot be setting up clinics and make reservations for residents who could prove they live in those hardest-hit, um, zip codes. Um, and, and for, for logical reasons, that those are the most, um, that's what we're seeing, the most cases of hospital, infection, hospitalization and death. Um, uh, could you respond to that, Dr. Moreno, to those points? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Lopez. So, uh, I can respond to the question about pharmacies. So, uh, I think it was November or December, uh, Safeway Pharmacy represented when the pharmacist reached out to, uh, us and shared some information about their ability to, uh, vaccinate individuals and residents in Monterey County. Um, and so they were proactive and, and had a system in place to do that, to register and bring people in. So, uh, we, we worked with them to get, uh, vaccine to them and their information on our website, uh, at two locations. The two that I, I think I mentioned on my presentation, two in Salinas. Uh, they wanted vaccine for all five of their stores. Um, however, we looked at the location of the stores and the other three stores were in, uh, Pacific Grove and, uh, uh, Delray Oaks and, and Carmel, I believe. And so, uh, we're looking at where, uh, people have been hardest hit by COVID-19. Uh, we and, and the, their representative agreed to, with limited supply, uh, because we couldn't provide vaccine to all their pharmacies. Uh, we provided some vaccine, uh, to their two Salinas locations, uh, and so that, um, they would be more, uh, at least physically, uh, geographically, be more, um, accessible to people, uh, living in, uh, the Salinas area. Uh, we haven't, uh, had any, we didn't have similar, uh, uh, response from, uh, the other pharmacies in Monterey County. As far as looking at getting, uh, people from, uh, have been hardest hit or, uh, risk of being, greater risk of being infected with COVID-19, uh, we're talking about parts of Salinas and South County primarily. Uh, we're looking at, um, trying to, uh, encourage, uh, our providers who are able to, uh, schedule appointments specifically for people who live in South County, uh, to receive vaccine and, uh, implement, uh, either through points of distribution clinics or through the, uh, more traditional outpatient clinic, uh, setting to, uh, vaccinate, uh, with primarily Moderna vaccine, uh, which is easier to store and administer. Get that vaccine to people who live in South County or live in, in Salinas. When we have open pods, uh, the, uh, in Monterey County, the, uh, and we're using the state system, which is the, uh, PREP mod system, uh, we should be able to track where people are coming from, uh, who show up for, to get their vaccine. Um, but, um, it doesn't restrict someone from getting a vaccine if you live in a particular zip code. So that's one of the challenges, it's definitely a challenge that we have, uh, because there are people who, as you mentioned, Supervisor, who can get on the website and may live, uh, in, perhaps on the peninsula and can find a vaccine clinic appointment in South County and schedule an appointment and, and drive down there to get it. And that's when, on the, unfortunately, when it's an open pod like that, uh, that's, that's one of the, the struggles, uh, that we have.
Right, and, and that's why we, we currently, like when we're helping vaccinating healthcare workers, rest verification that they're in healthcare, there's no reason why we couldn't verify, um, you know, zip codes and certain appointments, just, just making it accessible to all parts of the county. Um, if we know that it's, that's not happening, uh, today as it should, we should be strategizing for ways to, to address that concern right, uh, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just add a couple of quick comments. I think that, you know, as we've seen since March, that the systemic inequities that exist in our systems and, um, and, and community and just, uh, government and across the board have really been exasperated and, uh, bright lights have shown on them as a result of the COVID pandemic. Whether it's, you know, access for students to continue, uh, online learning, um, we saw it really clearly then. Uh, we saw it when, uh, overcrowded housing became hotspots for spread, uh, when people who don't have the luxury of working from home, um, become, uh, higher risk. And I think that this is another situation where we're, um, where we're seeing the, the systemic inequities result in, um, inequitable distribution of vaccine to the communities who really are most significantly impacted. So I would just echo the comments of my colleagues and just ask, uh, our health department staff to really, um, convene a, whatever working group you need. Uh, we're available to provide our thoughts and ideas. I know that there are community members who are seeing and hearing the same things that we are, that would be available to share their thoughts. Um, but to really think about how we can, um, overcome the systemic challenges to ensure that we are delivering, um, the, the, this life-saving vaccine to, uh, those communities who may not, um, have access to the system, um, that we typically use. Uh, I did have another question, or just I'll leave it out there. I've heard some concerns about second doses, about people not, um, you know, following through on their second dose appointment or not having, uh, clarity about how to make their second dose appointment. Um, so I just want to make sure we're not, um, that we really are thinking and, and coordinating and that all of our partners who are delivering vaccine, um, are on top of making sure that those folks get their second, who've received their first dose, that they get their second dose. And then, um, I'll finally just mention in terms of, uh, our commitment as a board and as a county to continue bringing in as much, uh, direct allocation of the vaccine as we possibly can, um, that there is, uh, we do have the, the VA is, uh, Veterans Administration, um, from what we understand is getting a direct allocation of vaccine. And we, we are working and, and looking at options to get, uh, the vaccine, um, into our Marina VA clinic so that we can have, uh, distribution at that location. So, um, anything and everything that we can do, uh, through the county health department to support coordinating and making that happen, um, I just want to, um, make that request, uh, here as well. Supervisor Phillips, you had, uh, comments, questions?
Yeah, and, uh, and one of the things that we maybe can do, especially in those, uh, impacted areas, is we put some money into COPA and, uh, other groups to, to reach out to them and, and maybe we got to up it a little, uh, more so they get the word out and help physically get those people in, in those zip codes, uh, in, uh, and get them registered, so.
Thank you. Okay, so moving along, I think now, do we have any other board comments on our initial presentation? Okay, we'll move along to our mass vaccination site planning update, which I believe is Dr. Moreno again, Chrissy, Meechey, um, Gary and Mike Dar.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, Gary, uh, is going to report on this. Uh, thank you, Chair, ask you, uh, this is a verbal report. Um, the Emergency Operations Center in support of the Health Department has completed its mass vaccination planning so that with, as little as twenty-four hours notice, that the county is getting additional vaccination to, uh, mass vaccinate the population. We can set up, uh, sites in multiple areas throughout the county. Um, that is not new, that was in our last report. What is new is that we are, uh, engaging in discussions and collaboration with our cities um, to determine the level of involvement that they would like to be in our mass vaccination program, should be come to one of their areas. Um, so we're ready to go, we just, uh, we have a lot of volunteers as vaccinators, and we just need more vaccine. End of report.
Thank you, and thank your team also for all of the work that I know you guys have, um, been, uh, doing, uh, in, in keeping this on your list as well as responding to other, uh, local emergencies that we've had. Uh, next up we have our hospital update, is Dr. Gray or Dr. Walls on the line?
Good afternoon, board members. Uh, Craig Walls here at Nativity Dad. So, um, I'll start with a summary, and that is that, uh, we are seeing our COVID numbers thankfully, uh, declining, uh, quite a lot. Uh, interestingly, the overall hospital census is still quite high. Um, that, that may be actually quite explainable. Um, as you can imagine, um, folks, folks are coming back into the hospital for non-COVID problems. So today, we So today we have 149 total census. Our COVID census is 30. Uh, we do persist with a large number of ventilated COVID patients. We have 14 patients on the ventilator today. Uh, number of prisoners, uh, has declined quite precipitously. Uh, just heard from Salinas Valley State Prison that they've, um, been able to vaccinate all their high-risk, um, folks. Uh, we have four, uh, with us today. Um, sad to report, a total of 95, um, COVID patients have passed away at Natividad, uh, since this began. Um, and briefly, if I can pull up, uh, yeah. So, um, what we're seeing at the other hospitals in our region is similar to what we see at Natividad. Uh, SVMH has 29, CHOMP 19, Me Memorial one, Hazel Hawkins has nine. Uh, so, um, that's a total of, I think, 88, which is down from a high of, uh, near 200. So that's where we're at today. Thank you for your interest. And unless, unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Walls, um, are there any board questions on this item? Otherwise, I think we'll hold public comment until we finish the full item and then we can come back around. Um, okay. Next up we have TMD messaging update with Nick Pasculi.
Nick? Yes.
There you are. Okay, welcome.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Chair Supervisor Askew and, and Honorary Chair, uh, Supervisors. I have a report for you. If I could share my screen? Okay. And hopefully you can see my screen. All right. So, um, I wanted to go over what our priorities are for, uh, the coming month, uh, February 2021. Um, we're putting a, a very large emphasis on, uh, broadcast media and social media, which is currently running. Um, and, uh, what we have on the air right now are PSAs geared towards testing and, and also encouraging people to continue to get testing. And I'm happy to tell you that those PSAs are, uh, not only in English and Spanish, but they are being distributed through a coalition of community-based organizations in indigenous languages, uh, which I'll go into a little bit more detail in just a few moments. Um, we're also, uh, have some PSAs with regard to what to do if someone tests positive. Again, those are also in, uh, not only English and Spanish, but in indigenous languages. And then we are providing some general vaccine information, um, on the radio. And as of today, we have just completed a Spanish testimonial spot with regard to vaccines, which was done in partnership with, uh, Laser Broadcasting. And so we're very happy about that. In fact, all the other Spanish broadcasting companies have agreed to run those testimonials on the air. Um, we're doing a tremendous amount of internet outreach. Uh, we have a new campaign, um, that's focused on face coverings, testing, discouraging social gathering, social distancing and hygiene, which is throughout social media, uh, Facebook, Instagram, and also digital, uh, retargeting campaign. Uh, we have eight new billboards that are up that replace the old billboards, um, which I'll show you a photo, uh, of in a moment. And those are throughout the county. Um, so they go from South County to Salinas and over to Seaside. And it's, uh, primarily focused on testing being safe and easy and referring people to the 211 system for information about testing. And then we are in, in the process of developing a, uh, flyer that will be distributed through the Monterey County Office of Education. I've been in contact with, uh, Dr. Danine Gus and, and her team. And we are gonna partner on that with the county to, uh, primarily target returning agricultural families with information about testing, what to do if you're sick, and also some vaccine information. But that flyer will go out to all school, uh, well, all the schools in the county as well as an electronic version to all the private schools. Um, also, we have a, um, we have a, uh, deployed a number of assets throughout the county. Um, we, these are, this is a picture of the billboard right here that's being, um, it's in all eight locations. These are samples of the social media and print graphics. And we're also running ads, uh, print ads in a Spanish newspaper, El Sol. Um, again, I wanna let everybody know who our new media partners are. Um, we had a lot of media partners in the first phase of this campaign. We brought on some new media partners, uh, as I said, Laser Broadcasting, uh, Radio Bilingue. And also we brought on El Sol, which is a Spanish-language newspaper, and the Carmel Pine Cone. Um, very happy with the relationships that we developed, the new ones, especially with Laser Broadcasting and Radio Bilingue, because they have also made programming available to us on Sundays, which we've done two so far in conjunction with the Natividad Medical Center, uh, that are targeting the indigenous populations. We also developed a media library, uh, on Vimeo, which is a, a web, uh, platform. Um, all the PSAs that have been produced, uh, for the county are housed in that library. There have been 51 PSAs produced, um, since July 2020. Um, they are in chronological order. So in other words, the, the most current ones are on top that we're running currently on television. Um, and, uh, also these are being run on social media as well. And our other media, uh, partners that don't have broadcast capabilities are using it on their social media. So we're getting pretty, very, very broad coverage throughout the county on all platforms. Additionally, we're amplifying the message. Um, we have, um, our, our numbers have increased on our Dropbox, uh, where we have all these assets, uh, stored. We now have over 224 individuals representing entities and community-based organizations throughout the county that are accessing these, uh, assets on a daily basis. And, and, and they are in bilingual as well as indigenous language. And I included a link to that, uh, Dropbox. It'll be in your report that you'll get as well. And then also we have, uh, the county communications team has partnered with the Community Foundation for Monterey County in helping to create and populate a community-wide toolkit. Um, and the toolkit is housed on the Community Foundation's website. Um, so there's this marketing, communications and marketing work group. And then there's a link to the toolkit. And then once the toolkit is open, that all the assets that are currently being deployed on behalf of the county are on, uh, that website as well. So it makes the access to this information very, very broadly, um, uh, accept, uh, usable by others in the county. And that's the end of my presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you for everything that you're doing to help, uh, let the community know, uh, how to stay safe and how to, um, how to respond if they are sick and where to get testing and now, um, communicating our vaccine information. Um, oh goodness, I think I missed, uh, I went out of, a little bit out of order. Uh, my apologies. Uh, we're gonna circle back to item number four on our update with our new volunteer program and website. Irma Ramirez, bow. Thanks for your patience.
No, no worries. Good afternoon, Chair Askew and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you today on our volunteer program. My staff and I have been working very closely with our IT department to develop a website specifically dedicated to, um, to, um, have volunteers be able to register and offer their services, um, to support our vaccine clinics. I have Ariana Ortado, who's my volunteer program coordinator, um, on with us. And she's going to share her screen, if we can allow that. So what we have is, we've created a banner on our county internet page. And people can click and as Ari's clicking on the side, you will see the, um, urgent healthcare volunteers needed. And individuals could click here and will automatically take them directly to our HR webpage. So Ari, if you can click. And so we've created a COVID-19 response volunteers. And we have right now, uh, positions that we are actively, um, asking individuals who may be interested to be able to complete these registration forms. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have Ari share with you those actual, um, positions. Um, and Ari, so I'm gonna pass it over to you.
Thank you, Irma. Good afternoon, everyone. So as Irma mentioned, there are four general categories that, uh, the county is seeking volunteers for. Um, this is the alternative housing site workers, the COVID-19, uh, vaccine administrators, uh, the COVID-19 non-licensed support staff for the vaccine clinics as well as general non-medical volunteers. Uh, the most urgent need currently is related to the COVID-19 vaccines. So I will be clicking on the vaccine administrator volunteer opportunity. There are, uh, different categories or roles that we are seeking volunteers in in relation to vaccine administration. So we have the actual administrate, administrators who are giving the vaccines. We have the, uh, vaccine preparers, so the drawers. And then we have, um, the vaccine monitors, so observers, people that watch, um, the, uh, patients after they've received the vaccine. And then we also are seeking some assistance with float staff so that they can provide relief, um, to these different roles in providing breaks and such. And then we also have the, um, going back to the non-licensed support staff, the critical roles that we are seeking volunteers in, in that arena are for record-keeping, uh, patient registration as well as traffic control. These are all specific to the, uh, upcoming, uh, community, uh, vaccine clinics that are currently underway. Um, let me go back briefly here. And so just as a point of reference for the general non-medical volunteers, this is more our general, um, volunteers that we would be, uh, utilizing to help set up the vaccine clinics, maybe deliver different supplies to the different sites. So more generalized positions. Um, and the alternative housing site workers, those are very specific to the, um, alternative housing sites that are located, um, in King City. So again, this is where, uh, members of the public or individuals go and, um, self-isolate, um, while they're positive for COVID-19. So these are the four different critical areas that we are currently, um, seeking volunteers in. Um, as Irma mentioned, there is that banner on the county's homepage. We also have that same banner on the county's human resources department website. You will notice it here. And then lastly, we've also, for the ease of the public, we've also added a tab on the Office of Emergency Services website. Uh, members of the public can access that same volunteer, um, website by clicking on the volunteers tab here. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Irma if you wanna add anything else.
No, thank you, Ari. Thank you for explaining that. And if any, um, members of the board or the public have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain any question.
Okay. Any board comments or questions? Okay, we do have, oh, okay, yes.
Madam Chair, if I could try, ask a question really quick before this goes to the public?
Yep, we'll throw it over to Charles McKee.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Irma and Ariana, it's great that you're doing this. Uh, can you explain real quickly the difference between the, what you have up, you know, now and, and, you know, applying for a job? Is it the same system or is it something different?
It is completely, it's a completely different. This system is for individuals who can actually, um, submit their interest through a registration form. And Ari, what I'm, what have you do is let's actually click on one of the jobs so we can share. But that is very different than our applicant tracking. For applicant job, tracking, which is our job opportunities, that is strictly for individuals who are seeking employment with the county, who can receive, uh, paid, um, salary and benefits. The volunteer program is for actually individuals for, um, volunteering to provide a service. And so they are actually logging in as Ari. And Ari, if you can explain how that, um, um, registration process works.
Correct.
Yeah, that's great. Thank, Irma. That, I think the issue is, I appreciate that 'cause I think the issue is sometimes the applicant tracking system can be cumbersome. And hopefully this is a much more streamlined process.
And it is. And the intent too, when a volunteer does submit the registration form, um, staff is prepared and has been given direction that a volunteer would receive an email notifying them that we have received their registration within 24 hours, um, um, that they will be contacted. Now, of course, you know, what we're, um, you know, hearing and how we're supporting the health department with the vaccine centers is, you know, deploying and setting up these vaccine centers are really gonna be depending on the vaccines that we receive, right? So depending on the vaccines that we receive, we will be able to, um, again, identify those individuals who have registered and expressed interest. And, um, um, members of the health department will be contacting them to, uh, schedule them to, um, arrive and provide training at the vaccine, vaccination centers.
Thank you so much, Irma. Um, so we do have a hand raised, well, we did have a hand raised. Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, I'll throw it back to you. Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, to thank Irma and staff for putting this together. And I know that, as I've heard this information in the past, I'm gonna share with the community that this isn't the first time the volunteers have stood up and actually volunteered to participate through this program, even though it looked slightly different before. And so I'm wondering, Irma, could you share with us what some of those numbers from before this program looked like this, uh, look like, just because I wanna make sure the community is aware that we've had some of these local heroes volunteering their time to participate to help out at, uh, Project Oasis and some of the other alternative housing sites. And I know a lot of folks came in early and said, hey, I'm a retired nursery doctor and wanna be part of the vaccination team. So do you have any of those figures you could share? It's just sort of preliminary. How many folks have come through, through, uh, those opportunities to, uh, help us out?
So with the, um, the, the previous, before we got this process set up, um, our individuals were, um, applying, so to speak, volunteering through our applicant tracking system. And roughly, we wanna say there was about 200, um, volunteers who have, who had expressed interest in supporting, um, us in our vaccination, um, centers. Um, and so those, those are sort of like preliminary numbers. But I'll tell you when we've, since Friday, since we've got the new website, on a daily basis, we are getting individuals who are, um, applying through this process. Um, as of Friday evening, we had roughly 25 people. Um, and I don't know, Ari, if you've got the numbers from, um, yesterday and today thus far.
Yeah, we have a combined total of close to 100.
Great, thank you. I just wanna appreciate them and appreciate all the work that it took to onboard them as well. Uh, but I know that they're a huge help to us as we continue through this. And appreciate you and your staff doing this work and bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So I'll take it out to public comment. Um, and I did see Norma had her hand raised at one point. Norma, are you still on the line? I don't see Norma on the line anymore. Um, but I do wanna let you know, Norma, we did receive your written comment that you emailed to the board. Uh, there you are. Nope, gone. Okay. Uh, any other public comment? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak?
Good afternoon and, oop, can you hear me okay? This is Eric Johnson with Mean Homeless Solutions. I, uh, wondered if we could just have a, maybe a, an idea of, of our homeless shelters, where they'll fall on the priority for vaccinations, which is really important in the congregate living and so on. And secondly, uh, just thinking about the vaccines as they're coming out, um, obviously single dose versus two is actually ideal as well for, uh, the shelters simply because of the turnover sometimes in the shelters and getting people vaccinated before they get out, back out in the street or in, in another congregate living. So can anyone comment on that and sort of where that'll fall on the priority list? Thank you.
That's a, it's a really good question. Um, I think it's worth, is, do we have the slide that, that's able to be popped up on the screen? And I do see that Norma's back. So maybe we'll let Norma, uh, make her comment and then we'll see if we can, uh, bring the slide up that has the tiers. Uh, Norma, you have three minutes.
Si bueno, si, gracias. Si, thank you, gracias. Si, me, me pueden escuchar? Si, bueno, si?
Si, normal. We'll escuchamos.
Gracias. Buenas tardes, miembro de la junta directiva. Mi nombre es Norma Horton y soy madre de familia y educadora de la primera infancia por más de 15 años. Estoy aquí ante ustedes en demanda de estos dos puntos de vital importancia. El primer punto sería que se priorice a todo el sector educativo y proveedoras de la primera infancia como trabajadores esenciales. El segundo sería que unánimamente las vacunas se aprueben del COVID-19 para todo este sector. Como madre siento un gran temor cada vez que salgo y regreso a casa después de un día de trabajo en el centro de educación temprana. El estrés y la ansiedad está afectando mi salud física y emocional. Al poner la vida de mi familia y mi propia vida en constante riesgo de contraer este virus o la nueva cepa del COVID. Mi prioridad como educadora de la primera infancia es proveer un ambiente seguro y saludable que refuerce el bienestar emocional de los niños y familias que trabajan en el sector agrícola del Valle de Salina. Lamentablemente, el sector agrícola forma más de un tercio de los casos de COVID-19, siendo nuestra comunidad latina la más afectada con un 80% de personas infectadas del COVID en el condado. Como trabajadora esenciales del cuidado de niños, es sumamente importante que nos sintamos protegidas y seguras ante esta pandemia. Nuestros niños merecen que sean exitosos en sus vidas y a través de nuestros recursos y cuidad- y a través de nuestros recursos y cuidados. Seguramente, entre todos estos niños tendremos los futuros miembros de la mesa directiva y líderes de nuestra nación. Por lo que ahora alzo mi voz a todas las proveedoras de la primera infancia y profesionales de la educación para que recibamos lo más pronto posible la vacuna contra el COVID y se nos considere trabajadores esenciales. Muchas gracias.
Our interpreter is fabulously scribbling down notes. Norma, is the comment that you emailed the same as what was just made? Because I could read the English version word for word if that would be preferable.
Norma, su comentario que dio hoy es el mismo que nos mandó por correo electrónico porque yo lo podría leer en inglés y eso es correcto. Norma, su comentario fue igual al correo electrónico que nos mandó.
Sí, así es, es el mismo.
Yes, that is true. It is the same. Okay, I'll go ahead and read it here. I've got it written out. So, good afternoon, members of the Board of Directors. My name is Norma Horton. I'm a mother and early childhood educator for over 15 years. I am here before you in demand of these two points of vital importance. Prioritize the entire education sector and early childhood providers as essential workers. Pfizer's two vaccines against the COVID-1 virus are unanimously approved. As a mother, I feel great fear every time I go out and come home after a day of work at the early childhood center. Stress and anxiety are affecting my physical and emotional health by putting the life of my family and my own life at constant risk of contracting this deadly virus or the new strain of COVID-19. My priority as an early childhood educator is to provide a safe and healthy environment that reinforces the emotional well-being of the children and families who work in the agricultural sector of the Salinas Valley. Unfortunately, the agricultural sector represents more than a third of COVID cases, with the Latino community being the most affected, with 80% of people infected in Monterey County. As essential childcare workers, it is extremely important that all of us feel protected and safe in the face of this pandemic. Our children deserve to be successful in their lives through our resources and care. Surely, among all these children, we will have the future members of the Board of Directors and leaders of our nation. So right now, I stand up and raise my voice for all providers and professionals in education to immediately receive the vaccine against COVID-19 and to consider us essential workers. Without all these people who are there on the front lines to care for their children, the country people cannot go to work. Finally, I ask for a vote of silence for the people who lost the battle and have died from the coronavirus during this time of the pandemic. Thank you. Thank you, Norma, for your comments today. And thank you for also providing them in writing so that we could make sure we accurately convey your comments. Is there any other public comment? I see a few more hands raised. We have call-in user one. So we will invite call-in user one, so someone who's on the phone. You will need to press star six to unmute yourself.
This is Nina Beatty. I want to bring up some issues that I haven't heard discussed today, such that these vaccines that are being delivered to the public are different. They involve gene therapy that actually reprograms the cells inside the body to generate a spike protein, to produce antibodies and related to SARS-CoV-2. The problems are that this can lead to inflammation and autoimmune reactions, can lead, could possibly cause neurological damage. It can increase risk to other viruses. The syncytin I proteins are, the spike proteins are essential to the formation of the placenta. If a woman's immune system starts reacting to syncytin I, she could become infertile. And this isn't being investigated. The former Pfizer top researcher and epidemiologist, epidemiologists and pulmonary experts in Europe have filed a petition with the European Medicines Agency that approves drugs to stop the trials to protect volunteers from this very thing. Syncytin in the brain could cause multiple sclerosis. The adjuvant reactions have been warned about. Children's Health Defense wrote a letter to the FDA warning them about that PEG 3350 propylene glycol can cause anaphylactic shock. The FDA has ignored it. And there should, at the minimum, be a skin test for sensitivity before administering the vaccine. And people have already had anaphylactic shock reactions, including a doctor who had no history of this. In Norway, deaths in nursing homes led the government to say to not give vaccines to very frail people. One of the issues that I'm very, very concerned about is the ethnic impacts due to genetics. Is that African-Americans and Hispanic people genetically break down this mRNA more slowly so that it can linger in their bodies longer. And they're at greater risk for long-term adverse reactions, which are not being studied, and adverse reactions including death. There's the autoimmune reactions. A healthy doctor died very suddenly of idiopathic thrombocystopenic purpura, ITP. He had no history of, I mean, he had, he was a healthy doctor, a healthy person. And it was, this is an autoimmune reaction. And it happened after he received injections of these, one of these vaccines. The CDC and the FDA don't have a central database to track adverse events. There have been 55 deaths as of, I think, mid-January. 55 deaths, 96 life-threatening events and other lesser severe events from these vaccines. And a Forbes article from last year described the protocols and said, very surprisingly, because it's a business magazine, that this is not a true vaccine. And that the setup for the vaccine was only to deal with mild reactions, not to, not to give any sort of immunity.
Nina, we're out of time for public comment. I'm sorry to cut you off, but our three minutes is up.
Yeah, I realize this is an important data for the public or the county to realize. And I'm very sorry that-
Nina, if you have additional comments, please send it to us at c o b at c o dot monterey dot c a dot u s. We are interested in hearing what you have to share. Next up, we have Eloise Shim. Eloise, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to talk about, again, about this issue. It seems like the county in Monterey, just by hearing everything about it, it's kind of a slice and dice methodology. It doesn't seem very organized to me. Because the way I figure it, and I'm in an empirical way, I don't think I myself, and I'm past 65, and I'm American citizen, I'm native Californian, and, you know, lots of my kids and grandkids have been born in Chomp. And the way I figure it, I'm not going to get this vaccine that I need in 2021, based on all the facts, you know? And I just, I don't understand why places like states like West Virginia, they have vaccinated like all their people. But here in California, in Monterey County, there's no vaccine. And there's hundreds of places. So also what I want to know is, this vaccine, COVID vaccine, is supposed to be free for everybody. So all these people, like Safeway and Doctors on Duty and all of that, are you going, if you go there, are they going to charge you? You know, it's too much information that you're gathering and dispersing here. And really, I just, you know, I don't feel like I'm ever going to get, and I'm not a stupid person, like I'm ever going to get the vaccine in 2021. Because it's too much. It's not organized. It's too many players having to get theirs first. And I, I mean, I want to reiterate that I think the federal government, the state of California has said the priority is for people 75 plus, 65 plus. Not, you know, all this, everybody thinks they're an essential worker. The ag industry, the hospitality industry, the teachers, the healthcare, all of them think, I mean, I myself am a teacher and I've been an administrator in healthcare. But I don't have a job there now because of COVID and because I'm older. So I think, you know, you need to stop looking the other way since you, Board of Supervisors, are supervising over the public health in Monterey and get, make sure that people like me get vaccinated sooner than later. Thank you.
We should allow three minutes. Try again, try pressing star six again.
Hi, this is Barbara Meister with the Monterey Bay Aquarium. I just wanted to comment and thank you for establishing the volunteer site on the webpage and with its clarity and feasibility to navigate. I will be sharing that site with our Monterey Bay Aquarium volunteers and encouraging them to check out these opportunities, particularly with helping with vaccination. And then just a quick second point. I learned today that the California Department of Finance will be distributing $50 down to the counties. Monterey County slated to receive $20 million to help with the COVID response, which is good, I know we need it. And I just want to encourage you to consider a need that I keep hearing from talking with their community-based organizations, the community health workers as they're getting hired and ramped up, a need for walk-in pop-up testing. The state testing sites, those four are great. However, with the digital divide, there is such a barrier for people to access that digital technology to get an appointment, that many people get discouraged. And so if we can consider putting some of that funding toward more walk-in event-based, you know, Saturday, Sunday, neighborhood, in-school parking lots or church parking lots, and especially when the community health workers get on-boarded, I think we'll be a lot more successful at get people tested. And then resources for isolation are probably also going to be needed to be funded, wage replacement and food, et cetera. So as we're preparing for vaccine, we also need to consider and keep our eye on the ball with regard to testing. So I just want to consider or offer that as a recommendation for consideration when this new money comes down the pike. And thank you all for all you're doing. And thank you also to Nick at TMD. So grateful to hear that more and more of the information is getting to our indigenous language community of which, I learned, we've got about 30,000 of those folks in our community. So it's really important that we reach them as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for joining us today. I'm not seeing any additional public comments. So I did want to just see if we could pull up the slide that shows the tiers to show where our unhoused neighbors fall into the priority for vaccine. And I give Dr. Moreno just a brief chance to comment on the safety of the COVID vaccine if you're interested in doing so. Dr. Moreno?
Hopefully you can see the slide now, Chair?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. All right. So this just shows the California's vaccination plan. And this shows the, also the website for the state, what, excuse me, the link for the state website that, where people should go if they want to see what the most up-to-date version of the plan is. But we do, it does show that Phase 1A here is healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities, and those individuals continue to get vaccinated. And then Phase 1B Tier 1 includes individuals 65 years of age and older, and those at risk of exposure. And so we're in Tier 1B, working on this 65 and older group, but prioritizing 75 and older. But the question, I think, was about certain congregate living settings. And so this may be the area that the individual was referring to, Chair. Congress settings where there's an increase of outbreak, in the incarcerated setting and Congress settings for homeless individuals. This might be the area that the person was asking about. And that's Phase 1B Tier 2, which we're not in right now.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Moreno, did you have any comments or briefly about the safety of the COVID vaccine?
Oh, just that the, just that we always go back to the statements of the manufacturer and the FDA in their documents that they release when they issue the emergency use authorization. And so that's really where people should go to. If they go to the FDA website, they can find those documents. And there's actually helpful information that is available for the public, intended for the public, for people receiving the vaccine, to learn about what the vaccine is, what kind of vaccines are available, and what is the side effects, what are the common side effects? Also, ways in which they can report adverse side effects to the CDC for, to collect data so the CDC and manufacturer can monitor the side effects that occur once many, millions and millions of people get vaccinated and develop data and reports on what the most common side effects are. So that's usually where we recommend that people go to learn more about the safety of the vaccine.
Great, thank you for that additional information. We have a couple of board comments. So we'll close public comments since I don't see any other hands raised. And we'll bring it back to the board. I see Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a motion, considering the news that has broken about the CVS pharmacies, that we send a letter to CVS, along also to our congressmen and our representatives at the federal level to ask that they look at the pharmacy program and reconsider the placement of those locations in Monterey County to those spots that equitably would make more sense, including the communities with the highest rates of infection. I think that that would be an appropriate way, action for our board to take in support of all the other work that we've done so far in response to this pandemic.
I'll second that. And just including to send that to the state legislators so they could be helpful and also weighing in on that. Madam Chair, if, Supervisor Lopez, are you done?
I am, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to just point a clarification for our public comments. We always welcome public comments. But, but, and I'm always, and I'm glad Dr. Moreno made a point about vaccine safety. Everybody's entitled to own opinions, but it's not helpful to put misinformation out there, especially claims that there's greater risk to African-American or Latino residents. Those things are not true. And I would implore our community that when they speak, speak to the facts and not put in misinformation because it does undermine our work in carrying out a successful vaccine program in our county. And I just wanted to stress that because every time I hear people make those kind of comments, it does, I think, it's counterproductive to having, let our experts, let our doctors, let our health officers address these issues if there are questions. But when people are speaking as if they have authority, I think that's, that just, it sets us back, I think, in our efforts here to be successful in carrying out a vaccination program. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. So we do have a motion from Supervisor Lopez, a second from Supervisor Alejo, to prepare and send a letter advocating for the pharmacy vaccine program to ensure equitable distribution, equitable access to locations in the communities that are most significantly impacted by COVID. I can definitely get behind that. Do we have any further comment on that motion? Could we take a roll call vote on that motion?
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
She fell off of the call earlier. Did we get Supervisor Adams, are you back in the, she's in the attendees list?
I just promoted her.
Hang tight, Mary, we're bringing you back.
Supervisor Adams?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
There you go. And Chair Supervisor Root asks you.
Aye. So without that- Aye. So without that motion carries, and I'm happy to entertain another motion to receive this report today.
I'll make that motion.
Fabulous. For a second?
Second.
Okay, great. I've got a motion from Supervisor Adams and a second from Supervisor Phillips to receive our report on the COVID update today. We'll take a roll call.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. Okay, we are moving on to item number 18. Item number 18 is receiving a presentation on the request for proposal process for the new homeless housing navigation facility, the Share Center. And I believe we have some staff comments.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll pass it over to Charles McKee. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Lori, I jumped, jumped in front of you there.
No problem, Charles.
Uh, this, this item number 18 is for the board's consideration of a RFP process, a request for proposals process to provide services to the homeless shelter called the Share Center that we're working collaboratively with the City of Salinas here down in, in Salinas. And it's been a joint effort between the county and the city. And there's a lot of information that we think is appropriate for both bodies to hear, both the City Council and the Board of Supervisors to potentially hear on this matter. We know there's a lot of public interest in it. We know that there are, there are two bidders who have submitted proposals. And so what we recommend that the board actually continue this matter to February 9th for a proposed joint meeting with the City of Salinas City Council so that we can hear the presentations from both staff and, and any, any comments from the public and from the potential bidders at that time and hear it jointly and collectively with the City of Salinas. We've been in some conversations with the city and, and I think they're open to it. They're going to consider the same proposal at their city council meeting today. And if the board was amenable to that, we could, we could have the clerk work with the, uh, clerk of the Board of Supervisors work with the City of Salinas to set, to arrange that. That being said, it doesn't mean that you couldn't hear any public comment today on the matter because I know there's certainly a lot of interest. I think the public should also be aware that even if they, if the board moves us to February 9th and they don't speak today, they can always speak on February 9th at the joint meeting that we would have at that time. And if the City of Salinas does not approve having a joint meeting on February 9th, we, we could also bring this back on February 9th for consideration separately by this board or the following meeting of the Board of Supervisors after that.
Okay. And, and ultimately what we're, what we would be looking for would be needing to have the city and the county come to the same, the same vote as an outcome in order to move forward. And so the joint meeting would allow us to have that discussion together.
Right. Ideally to move forward, we, we, we need to have consensus between the two bodies, that they come to the same conclusion. And, but that doesn't mean that that will happen. It just means that that's the ideal way of moving forward. And if there isn't any, if there isn't unity on how to move forward, we would address that issue at the time.
Okay, wonderful. I would definitely support that. I think having a joint meeting would allow us all to hear the same information and work together to, to build consensus. I, I see Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, to do that. I, I, just speaking on this motion, on procedure, I, I would welcome that. This is exciting that finally we would have a, having a joint meeting with the City Salinas, especially on something as exciting as having the first year-round navigation center for our residents facing homelessness in our community called the Share Center. And this, and, and doing that joint meeting, which I think is the first probably ever, at least in recent memory, would allow us to have the same conversation, be on the same page, be in the same Zoom room, and be able to hear each other out rather than having separate conversations. I just want to express to the City Council that my commitment is to hopefully have the county and the city reach consensus on who would operate the, the center. I know there's a, there's concerns about the two applicants. I know we'll hear some in just a bit and more when we, we have that future meeting. But I think I just want to express to the council members that this is exciting. This is something we should be celebrating in our community. And I think it's going to be a, one of those major accomplishments that are going to help us better address homelessness in Salinas and, and in Monterey County. But I, I think we, our commitment is to find that, that agreement. But there are some issues to work through. It's not a negative thing. I think we could find the right, right result in the end after this meeting. So if I can make that motion, I, I do so. Thank you.
And I'll second that Supervisor Alejo. So the motion from Supervisor Alejo, a second from Supervisor Askew, to hold a special joint meeting with the Salinas City Council on February 9th, I believe 4:00 PM was the time I had written down, assuming concurrence with the City of Salinas Council when they discuss this at their meeting tonight. Any further comments from other board members?
Madam Chair, I just want to leave some flexibility, perhaps, that, because sometimes, you know, the city usually has their meetings once, only twice a month. In, in case, maybe if, if you're good with it, if we say for the 9th, but if that 9th doesn't work, maybe allow it for the following week, the 16th. That way, there's two options there. I just don't want it, the date to be the, the problem because it's outside of their normal scheduled meetings. And sometimes council members work out their work and family schedules based on their, their typical calendar. So, so-
Of course. So we'll leave it date uncertain, date to be determined.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll work with the City of Salinas.
Of course.
Or to confirm a date. Okay. Any further comments from board members? Uh, do we, do we go to public comment now for the item? Or would we do public comment just to do the special meeting and then come back and hear from the public?
There's technically a motion to continue on the floor, so the public comment would be on the motion to continue, which would touch upon the need to make a decision. But, but not public comment really on the substance of the decision at this time.
Okay. Then we'll come back and hear public comment on the substance.
Right.
Is that clear to everyone? So we'll, this is just on the, the setting of a special meeting. We'll come back and have additional public comment about the substance of the item. Okay. Any public comment on us forming a, having a, requesting a, a joint meeting with the City of Salinas? I'm seeing none. Oh, I'm seeing one. Okay. Eric, thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you. Um, this is really remarkable, and I, I really love this direction. It's, it's terrific to see the city and the, and the county teams together. So thank you for that suggestion. I really, I think it's the right direction. I think you arrived, arrived at the right conclusion ultimately, which is wonderful. So, uh, thank you for doing that. I got my special Zoom due today just for this meeting, so I want you to know that, that I appreciate you opening up as well on, on the, on my hair cutter. So, um, would be great to know what day we end up picking as soon as possible. And I do apologize, you guys have all received lots of information as well from me. I hope it's helpful to comb through and everything else. And, and it's taken in the right spirit as well as this meeting that this is all about collaboration with all the great agencies and so on and work with the community. So take it in that spirit. Please don't take it as anything but passion, not anger, and, and something, again, as well as getting as much information about our organization, Community Homeless Solutions, as possible. And I'll continue after that with a later motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So we will take a roll call. Any, any other public comment on this? Okay. We'll close public comment and we'll move to a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. Wonderful. Thank you all for that support. And I've been in touch with the Mayor of Salinas, and I think that this is, this is a good step in the right direction for us to continue building on our collaborative working relationship. The Share Center is just one of the many, many, many issues that we need to be working in collaboration, not just with the City of Salinas, but with all of our city partners. And being able to have these conversations together and jointly and building consensus and building relationship and building a shared commitment towards solutions, I think is really important. So I just wanted to thank, thank my colleagues for your willingness to approach this one a little bit differently. With that, we will open up, there are people in the audience, and I believe some people on the phone, who did want to share some public comment with us today about the, the, the request for proposals and the Share Center. So I will open up public comment. I'm not sure how many people, we still have some closed session business to attend to before the end of the day. So if it's all right with everyone, would 90, and since we'll have another chance to do public comment, would 90 seconds be sufficient for public comment for this item? Okay, wonderful. So let's do 90 seconds. And we will start with those in the audience. And anyone who's on the phone who would like to comment, you can use the raise hand feature if you're on Zoom, or press star nine if you're on the phone, and that will allow you to raise your hand and allow us to call on you. But we'll start with our audience. Thank you. And thank you again for your patience and waiting for us to get to this item today.
Oh, you bet. Thank you. Um, I just wanted in this, in this consideration for you to consider three things about the Share Center that make sure that as well when the joint session happens, it occurs. Number one, the Share Center is about vision and leadership. It's not simply about services. And it's about your local agency. It's about your leadership team. It's about being bilingual. It's about everything that goes into making this center, the center of reaching homelessness and bringing parties together across not just your agency, city and county, but across your business community. And this has to be also across our peninsula, which hasn't been involved in a lot of our homeless stuff. So it should be fun. It should be upbeat. It should be welcoming. It'd be something that gets people housed, it gets their feet, you know, on the ground, and, and then continues to support them and to give back to the community. This is though, secondly, a Share Center. It is not simply a navigation center like you see in the Bay Area or in Seattle or in Los Angeles. It's not purely referral business. It's drop-in business. It's principally and primarily a shelter first with great navigation services that go alongside of that. And don't lose track of that, Community Homeless Solutions has been doing six shelters as it does currently and has been doing for 40 years. So keep in mind that this, again, is, is important from a navigation standpoint. And third, keep in mind as well that housing is a key focus. Community Homeless Solutions has had a success rate of over 85% of our people housed in transitional housing. We've had 92 people housed out of the warming shelter alone this year. So look at statistics, compare them properly, and then take those, I guess, as you will, as your priority. So thank you very much. Appreciate the time to talk also, hopefully on the 9th or the 16th, whenever that happens. So thanks, Win.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, and, um, Chair, Askew and Honorable Supervisors, I'm Teresa Erickson. I am the Board Chair, which I have been for seven years. I've been involved in the homeless community for, um, since 2003 when we first moved here. My husband is Pastor Mick Erickson. Some of you may know him. And we had started homeless ministry out of our church, and that was my heart. So I'm passionate about what we do, and I wouldn't be here otherwise because mine is a volunteer job. It's not about politics. It's not about profit, and it's not about power, but it's about people. And the people that we serve with compassion and caring, and we are a part of this community. That's our name, Community Homeless Solutions. We partner with so many agencies, including the Coalition, the Housing Authority, CECL, and now even an initiative with CCAH. With COVID this past year, it blasted through everything with 24/7 services, and we came up and stepped up to the plate and provided housing and provided shelter, and were able to move many of those people out of there even in the midst of COVID, which is daunting even in of itself. So we have had that. And just to remind you that any of us could be homeless. I work in the medical community, and a disaster of some proportion that brings medical suspense, expenses could hit any of us. So it's not an issue of them. It's us. Thanks very much.
They've added loud noises for us. Anyone else in the audience who would like to make public comment today? Okay, let's see. Who do we have on the phone? Megan Hunter from Zoom. Would you like to unmute yourself and speak for a minute and a half?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. Hi, this is Megan Hunter with the City of Salinas. Um, I am, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the city that we're looking forward to the joint meeting. And I do want to reiterate that we did establish a process of, of what we feel is a fair process in evaluating the two proposals. And of course, we will provide the, the presentation to both the City Council and Board of Supervisors as to why the recommendation was for Bay Area Community Services. And I think we, we just need to focus on how that process was run and the, the RFP process, just to make sure that we have consistent processes moving forward for our homeless service awards. I know it's always difficult to make tough decisions regarding how contracts are awarded. And I think just understanding the process is really going to be key moving forward so that, you know, we have consistency in, in future situations like this. And, and some expectations for those who submit applications is how we're going to run these processes. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us and for your comments today, Megan. I don't see any other public comment on the, in the audience, and I don't see any other public comment on the phone, or in Zoom, I should say. Is there any other board discussion at this point? Otherwise, I think that went faster than I expected it to. All right. Um, we've already taken action on this, and we look forward to hearing from more of the community and more of the public when the item returns for our joint meeting. At this point, I would like to ask for County Council to read out any action from closed session, both for the Board of Supervisors and for the Monterey County Water Resources Agency.
There was no reportable action for either entity, Chair.
Okay. And we will be going back into closed session after this, but if we could have our comment, we will be adjourning when we return. There was a way that we did that before, wasn't there?
Correct. We, we will, the record will reflect, reflect that we will adjourn from closed session. There will be no reportable action out of the closed session, and we can do the adjournment in memory now.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, so we'll do what Lester just said. And we, we will be adjourning our meeting today in memory of Bruno Reyno Sala. And I believe Supervisor Phillips is prepared to share some reflections and comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's, it's regret. I stopped and saw the family on, on Saturday when they had a, a little walkthrough to say goodbye to Bruno. Bruno Sala was born in 1941 in Greenfield, the, the son of, of immigrant from Swiss Italian. They operated a dairy in, in Greenfield. And in 1951, they moved up to the Salinas area, which most of you know, the Solit Road, that whole area was owned by the, the, by Bruno and, and his family. They operated the dairy there, and he was actor and active in Future Farming America, and was a great show of his dairy cows and local fairs. He graduated from high school in, in 59. And some of my friends, Judge Meyer, who grew up with him, said, they used to make fun of him because he was always in his work boots and everything. And then he was one of the most productive people of the, in their class. In 1960, the family created the Blue Ribbon Dairy, a popular drive-in, and he worked along with his father. And then later on, was proud to be working along with his son that he was so proud of, Brian. The, the thing about Bruno is, when I think about him, he reminds me of my own father. He, when you think about Bruno, he was a hardworking man. He always, was always working, even though he was very successful. He could have been driving anything, but he always drove his truck. Anytime you came to a meeting, he always had his work boots on, his jeans on. He was just a, a, a hardworking man. He was a very, very successful businessman, entrepreneur, and created more businesses than probably anybody knows. And he was very involved and a great member of the community. So Bruno Sala will be dearly missed. He was a, a real character. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the Monterey County Water Board of Supervisors of the Monterey Water- of the Monterey Water Resources Agency and the rest of the board supervisors will adjourn to closed session where we will or recess to closed session where we will adjourn. All right. Thank you so much for joining us. Thanks for bearing with me today. And we will be back here again next week. All right, thanks.